Go ahead, Jessica.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 24, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Public religion stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we are joined by ASL interpreters Selena Salum and Tamara Gasalum. Judge, do you have any opening comments you'd like to make before we begin?
Yeah, no, just I think today's very, very important when we look at economic development. It touches so many things. People don't realize it even touches on on mental health. It touches on, you know, quality of of living, you know, being able to address situations that are keeping our constituents from living the best way that they can. So I think sometimes it's it's a narrow. We look at economic development a little bit narrow, and I think in the county, we've looked at it as very broad. And how does that impact from, you know, every time there's a development? Infrastructure sometimes comes into play. And so if we keep that in mind, and that I think it's one of the, right now, we're in a pivotal situation, I believe. We met yesterday with the Aspen at the group, and it was extremely well received. We had so many individuals there, the whole community was there to talk about, you know, investing in supplier development. And they focused a lot on on this, you know, Ford Bliss, how little we supply. I think, Betsy, it's a small number, Roberto, it's a very small percentage, right, of what we supply Ford Bliss, such a one of the biggest military bases. And yet, we don't supply a lot of, you know, our suppliers aren't taking advantage of that situation. So they're coming in, looking at funding, and then looking at strengthening supplier and making them a little bit more viable for them to be able to participate in either funding or bids. So I think it's going to be a really good thing. And they're looking for certain advisory. We're looking at San Antonio. I understand there's a little bit of glitches and things that they're having to work through. But I think that's going to be our benchmark to see what's happening in San Antonio. In San Antonio, it's Cisneros, the previous mayor, is in charge of that advisory council. So anyway, we're looking at a lot of different things, a lot of things that are coming up for us. One of the things that we need desperately is revenue. So if we could keep our eye on on what are the things that could generate money for for the county as part of this, looking at the economic development throughout the county. So I think it's going to be a great meeting. I'm sure we won't be able to tell you everything completely, but I think it's going to be a great foundation to see what we could do as Commissioners Court in our involvement. And like I said, it touches tourism, it touches all all elements. So wish all of you the best, and be as open minded, and and as many questions that you might have, and we're going to really establish. I think this is a component, right, Betsy? I mean, this is sort of leads into our strategic planning. And we'll identify some of the things that we need to cover a little bit more in strategic planning. And Betsy, any comments from you as to your expectations?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I believe Jessica was going to read the item, and we were going to give some comments on it. I don't know if it's okay to proceed with that.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, yes. Let me just go over item number three, public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up, so we'll take no action for item three. Item number four from the irregular agenda, discuss the development of El Paso County Economic Development Policies, Procedures, and Processes, including but not limited to discussion on strategic planning, policy development, process improvement within the department, structuring industry-specific development and support programs as funded by various funding sources, including but not limited to the County General Fund, County Economic Impact Fund, County Tax Abatements and Rebates, and Hotel Occupancy Tax Revenues to Foster Collaboration, Identify Key Priorities, and Enhance the Overall Effectiveness of Our Economic Development Efforts.
Okay, thank you, Judge. So as you all know, in your strategic plan, your number two goal is, well, we call it, I call it enhance economic development, but it's transform economic development is what the the goal is called. But this is because Commissioners Court, for a number of years, has been really invested in what we can do for economic development in our community. One of the things we frequently discuss is the low wages in El Paso and the imbalance of our property tax, that we are extremely dependent on residential property taxes versus commercial property taxes. And so over time, we have been working to invest and build up our economic development initiatives at our department, and and really focus a policy and and initiatives that meet what the county's interests and needs are. And as you know, for just a little bit of history, we originally partnered with the City of El Paso to do economic development. But it was a real struggle because their interests did not always align with our priorities and our interest. So fast forward to today, and what I'm really excited about is this discussion we want to have with you all today. We hear ideas and comments come up when we're talking about a specific 381 usually. The court brings ideas to the table or says, gosh, I really like that they're doing this investment, but the jobs aren't where we want them to be. Or it might, sometimes we hear other values that are important to you all, and you wonder if we could incorporate those into economic development. So we're, fast forward to today, and what I'm super excited about is the information we've heard from you all, this opportunity to have this discussion with you all about what is important when we consider economic development. And I'm especially excited about our economic development team and where we're at today. We do still have some staffing that we're building up, but I'm especially excited to have Jose and to have Roberto leading this work. I think we are on, we are at a place where it is strategic, it is for the long term best outcomes for our community, the work that we're going to be undertaking and and updating in this policy. And as we get more and more businesses that we've attracted, the less you have to rely on incentives, which is where we want to eventually get to. Or the less we've gotten different variety of industries, the less you may have to rely on your incentives. So I just really wanted to introduce the item, and thank you all for your leadership on this. I think if you look at what's happened in wages in El Paso over the last several years, they are coming up. You see property values and investment and growth in the commercial industry also growing. You see areas of our community growing commercially, and these are the things that we're working towards. So I I'm just really could not be, I think we are at a pivotal and exciting place where we're at with economic development. And this discussion and feedback you all give us today will be very vital to us updating the policy and bringing you back a new a new policy and other initiatives to help continue our work on economic development. And thank you all for starting early. I know a lot of us have commitments this afternoon, and so we really appreciate you coming in early and getting this meeting started. And with that, I'll turn it over to our team unless any member of the court has any comments they want to make.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Solcanderos with County Administration, joined this morning by Mr. Roberto Ransom with Economic Development. We put together quite an ambitious agenda, but in recognition of the the time that we want to ensure the court has to discuss mainly two topics on this agenda, we're going to just focus really on the business attraction retention first, which is an overview, literature review, and then discussion on opportunities that we may have regarding the existing 381-312 incentive policy. And then we will also focus on the ARPO Economic Recovery Program and allow the court to provide us some direction on on those proposals. Those proposals, as it's important to note, are just intended to be the the first step of this process. We still have to confer with the county attorney's office on some of those proposals to ensure that they're, they meet the spirit and the rules of the American Rescue Plan Act and are indeed eligible. And then they would be, once we clear that, we would then move those forward into agreements, and they would be brought before the court here in the next next few weeks. And if the court wants to have a discussion as well on on any additional ideas or proposals, we're at that point now where I think we can have that conversation. I think it's obviously finite on that. But so this agenda will be placing the first and fourth.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 24, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we are joined by ASL interpreters Selena Salum and Tamara Gasalum. Judge, do you have any opening comments you'd like to make before we begin?
Yeah, no, just I think today's very, very important when we look at economic development. It touches so many things. People don't realize it even touches on on mental health. It touches on, you know, quality of of living, you know, being able to address situations that are keeping our constituents from living the best way that they can. So I think sometimes it's it's a narrow. We look at economic development a little bit narrow, and I think in the county, we've looked at it as very broad. And how does that impact from, you know, every time there's a development, infrastructure sometimes comes into play. And so if we keep that in mind, and that I think it's one of the right now, we're in a pivotal situation, I believe. We met yesterday with the Aspen at the group, and it was extremely well received. We had so many individuals there, the whole community was there to talk about, you know, investing in supplier development. And they focused a lot on on this, you know, Ford Bliss, how little we supply. I think, Betsy, it's a small number of Roberto, it's a very small percentage, right, of what we supply Ford Bliss, such a one of the biggest military bases. And yet, we don't supply a lot of, you know, our suppliers aren't taking advantage of that situation. So they're coming in, looking at funding, and then looking at strengthening supplier and making them a little bit more viable for them to be able to participate in either funding or bids. So I think it's going to be a really good thing, and they're looking for certain advisory. We're looking at San Antonio. I understand there's a little bit of glitches and things that they're having to work through. But I think that's going to be our benchmark to see what's happening in San Antonio. In San Antonio, it's Cisneros, the previous mayor, is in charge of that advisory council. So anyway, we're looking at a lot of different things, a lot of things that are coming up for us. One of the things that we need desperately is revenue. So if we could keep our eye on on what are the things that could generate money for the for the county as part of this, looking at the economic development throughout the county. So I think it's going to be a great meeting. I'm sure we won't be able to tell you everything completely, but I think it's going to be a great foundation to see what we could do as Commissioners Court in our involvement. And like I said, it touches tourism, it touches all all elements. So wish all of you the best, and be as open minded and and as many questions that you might have. And we're going to really establish. I think this is component, right, Betsy? I mean, this is sort of leads into our strategic planning, and we'll identify some of the things that we need to cover a little bit more in strategic planning. And Betsy, any comments from you as to your expectations?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I believe Jessica was going to read the item, and we were going to give some comments on it. I don't know if it's okay to proceed with that.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, yes, let me just go over item number three, public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up, so we'll take no action for item three. Item number four, from the irregular agenda, discuss the development of El Paso County Economic Development Policies, Procedures, and Processes, including but not limited to discussion on strategic planning, policy development, process improvement within the department, structuring industry-specific development and support programs as funded by various funding sources, including but not limited to the County General Fund, County Economic Impact Fund, County Tax Abatements and Rebates, and Hotel Occupancy Tax Revenues to foster collaboration, identify key priorities, and enhance the overall effectiveness of our economic development efforts.
Okay, thank you, Judge. So as you all know, in your strategic plan, your number two goal is, well, we call it, I call it enhance economic development, but it's transform economic development is what the the goal is called. But this is because Commissioners Court, for a number of years, has been really invested in what we can do for economic development in our community. One of the things we frequently discuss is the low wages in El Paso and the imbalance of our property tax, that we are extremely dependent on residential property taxes versus commercial property taxes. And so over time, we have been working to invest and build up our economic development initiatives at our department and and really focus a policy and initiatives that meet what the county's interests and needs are. And as you know, for just a little bit of history, we originally partnered with the City of El Paso to do economic development. But it was a real struggle because their interests did not always align with our priorities and our interest. So fast forward to today, and what I'm really excited about is this discussion we want to have with you all today. We hear ideas and comments come up when we're talking about a specific 381 usually. The court brings ideas to the table or says, gosh, I really like that they're doing this investment, but the jobs aren't where we want them to be. Or it might, sometimes we hear other values that are important to you all, and you wonder if we could incorporate those into economic development. So we're fast forward to today, and what I'm super excited about is the information we've heard from you all, this opportunity to have this discussion with you all about what is important when we consider economic development. And I'm especially excited about our economic development team and where we're at today. We do still have some staffing that we're building up. But I'm especially excited to have Jose and to have Roberto leading this work. I think we are on, we are at a place where it is strategic, it is for the long-term best outcomes for our community, the work that we're going to be undertaking and updating in this policy. And as we get more and more businesses that we've attracted, the less you have to rely on incentives, which is where we want to eventually get to. Or the less we've gotten different, a variety of industries, the less you may have to rely on your incentives. So I just really wanted to introduce the item, and thank you all for your leadership on this. I think if you look at what's happened in wages in El Paso over the last several years, they are coming up. You see property values and investment and growth in the commercial industry also growing. You see areas of our community growing commercially. And these are the things that we're working towards. So I I'm just really could not be, I think we are at a pivotal and exciting place where we're at with economic development. And this discussion and feedback you all give us today will be very vital to us updating the policy and bringing you back a new a new policy and other initiatives to help continue our work on economic development. And thank you all for starting early. I know a lot of us have commitments this afternoon, and so we really appreciate you coming in early and getting this meeting started. And with that, I'll turn it over to our team unless any member of the court has any comments they want to make.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Solano, that was with County Administration, joined this morning by Mr. Roberto Ransome with Economic Development. We put together quite an ambitious agenda, but in recognition of the the time that we want to ensure the court has to discuss mainly two topics on this agenda, we're going to just focus really on the business attraction retention first, which is an overview, literature review, and then discussion on opportunities that we may have regarding the existing 381, 312 incentive policy. And then we will also focus on the ARPA Economic Recovery Program and allow the court to provide us some direction on on those proposals. Those proposals, as it's important to note, are just intended to be the the first step of this process. We still have to confer with the County Attorney's Office on some of those proposals to ensure that they're, they meet the spirit and the rules of the American Rescue Plan Act and are indeed eligible. And then they would be, once we clear that, we would then move those forward into agreements, and they would be brought before the court here in the next next few weeks. And if the court wants to have a discussion as well on on any additional ideas or proposals, you know, we're at that point now where I think we can have that conversation. I think is obviously finite on that. But so this agenda will be placing the first and fourth points on your agendas in the coming weeks, so we can continue those conversations. Obviously, there's some overlap between a lot of these discussions generally, especially with regard to everything happening at the Fabinz Airport, everything that we're attempting to develop out at the Marcelino Serna Port of Entry. And then obviously, as we continue to discuss how we can grow heritage tourism activity in the region, those are all vital conversations that we want to ensure the court has in the next coming weeks. We'll go a little out of order. As I mentioned, we're going to go to the 381 policy, which is just an overview of, it starts with a discussion on every single type of project that might be eligible. The policy, the way it's written, the way it's structured is a little disjointed. We finished this section with the SWOT analysis. I think that's one of the major takeaways, that it's it's hard to determine if you're if you're a company from looking to evaluate how would my business fit into the county's economic development structure. It's a little disjointed, and so we'll, but we're going to go through all of those proposals so you can understand, I think, the spirit of what is what is intended to be developed and promoted. But it's important to note, you know, as the court is aware, just like your budget is a reflection of the values and priorities that you set, your strategic plan is as well. This policy, being a trickle down of that, also highlights what the court values. And so as we've seen discussions, as Ms. Keller mentioned, about wages being a huge priority and always requesting that businesses bring in at least 100% or that they bring in all their jobs at or above the median county wage, that's a value that's currently missing from your policy, just as an example. And so we want to ensure that we gain your feedback on what some of those other values that you might, that the court might hold are, so that we can incorporate those accurately into this document. The general criteria that outline, is outlined at the beginning of your policy states that obviously has to be to enhance economic health of the region, increase jobs, add to the tax base, or somehow improve our economic vitality in the region, and that there's potential to generate revenue on that investment once the incentive is over, right? So the idea being that we would grow, and eventually in 10 years or whatever the term of the incentive structure is, we would start to see some revenue back to the county, and that our return on investment of public funds would be would be met. It has to demonstrate a public purpose, which there's some overlap in the general language. But then we also have to ensure that the business demonstrates financial capacity. So we don't want to incentivize a business at a very high level that perhaps is the first venture of an individual or a group of individuals. A discussion like with with Meta most recently, right? They're coming in, I think it's very clear to us that they are a company with financial capacity, demonstrated commitment to to make their investments successful. And if we saw a company with less experience, we might be questioning what some of their assumptions are in terms of their revenues and their performance. And so those are some of the details that the staff can request in the event that we want to ensure that we're making a sound investment. Your policy is broken then down into two groups of two groups of incentives. You have countywide categories, and then you have investment zone categories. And so countywide categories are 95%, if not all of what we've seen in the past three years, I would say. These are the companies that are, they're obviously going to be located in different parts of the community, but they generally are benefiting the entire region, and that's due to the size of their investment, that's due to the number of jobs they're creating. The companies that come to mind, obviously, as I mentioned, one being Meta, TJ Maxx a few years ago, Grupo Bafar, who made the food distribution announcements just a few months ago as well. Even though these are located in obviously individual precincts, individual parts of the community, their benefit to the Eaton, those are, those are regional investments, and so they qualify under one of these four categories.
What we think quality job is?
Yes, sir, yeah. And so the next slide starts to speak to what those requirements are.
Okay.
So there's a update on this slide. I do apologize, it was our oversight. So the criteria, right, where we define what a quality job is, is that all jobs must exceed the median county wage. There's a minimum of 30 jobs to be created, and then there's a minimum of a million dollar investment. So if you had a company who came to the county and had at least 30 jobs, was going to make a million dollar investment, and all those jobs were going to pay at least 20% above the median county wage at the time, they would be eligible for incentives under this structure. So that is the quality job component. You can see here what the structure for those rebates look like. If they exceed the median county wage by 20%, they have a 25% rebate over 10 years, and then it goes up all the way up to 75% if they exceed it by by 40%. Currently, your median county wage is hovering at around $16.50. A few years ago, at the beginning of the pandemic, that was just under, it was right around $14, so it has grown quite a bit. But part of that might be accounted for naturally because of the inflation that we've seen. But there has been some movement in the in the right direction because of some of the economic development activity that the region has seen. This criteria of jobs has also, as we're having this conversation, been probably one of the least utilized incentive categories. We've not seen a lot of incentives offered under this section of the policy. Most of the, most of the investments that we see fall under business type and key industries as well as capital investment.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the prior slide?
Yes.
Okay, so then the two bottom bullet points under criteria, those are incorrect. One should state 30, actually, the no minimum number of jobs required should state 30?
Yes, so it's 30 minimum, so they have to have at least 30 jobs, and then a million dollar investment.
Okay, so the two bottom bullet points, really.
Right, yes, ma'am.
And if I can follow up on that, on the on the job description, we only focus on the on the pay, not on the benefits at all, insurance, health insurance.
Right, it's just pay. It's just if their salary is at or above the median county wage.
So I know that I know that we haven't had a lot of applicants like under this category itself, but I think, I mean, mostly on an ad hoc basis, and this is something that I want to talk about during this during this session, is, you know, maybe doing away with this category in itself and in making sure that everything else that we incentivize has these, you know, at least, you know, pays the median county wage. Because I know that we've talked about that, you know, case by case, even though we've had, you know, capital intensive projects or, you know, high expenditures, the other categories, you know, we've always talked about, we want them to at least pay the median county wage. So I think we should, I mean, since we're not really, I guess we could keep this category. It's not been utilized, really. And then, but make sure we integrate these things into the other the other categories.
Yeah, Commissioner, it's actually one of the conversations that we were having exactly is folding this category into the existing one being a possible path forward, creating the baseline based on what we've heard from the court in in the past year of ensuring that all incentivized projects meet the median county wage at the minimum, that being the floor. And in the event that they exceed by 20%, 30%, 40%, the rebate could actually be bumped up a little bit as a result of that. And then, Commissioner Leon, to your point, to your question about benefits, and that's another area where the county could look to further incentivize if you have a company who's willing to provide 100% of the premiums for healthcare, if they make investments in childcare for their for their employees, or there's other benefits the court identifies as being a priority.
Family leave.
Right, an added benefit, family leave, another one. If we evaluate that the company is really serving the employees well, and these are going to be very well-rounded jobs, not only in terms of salary, but also fringe and benefits, those would be additional bumps to the rebate structure that that we could consider, sort of as add-ons to the existing. So that's certainly something to to consider.
Now, there are, just to be, and I know we're going to have a slide more on this discussion, but there are things you would not have incentivized if you'd had that policy, that we did incentivize. So I'm just going to use an example. I think the Grupo Bafar would not have qualified if we'd had this as a requirement. The wages, I do not believe, were median county wage, but it was a large investment, and the wages were much higher than the industry average or even the census distract average for that area. So if you make it an absolute requirement versus an an extra level of incentive qualification?
It needs to be absolute, in my opinion. I know that I know that in the past, we've, you know, steered away from it because of what, I mean, it was still kind of not not set, but we can't, I don't think we should be incentivizing people that are paying under 15, 16 bucks an hour, you know? I mean, it pushes the median county wage down. We shouldn't be doing that. So I don't have a problem with, as we move forward, making sure that that those, I mean, we have to be selective.
Yeah, I think at one time, we were almost having to because we were in such a difficult situation, and we kept saying, you know, someone wants to pay 13, they're making 11, so 13 should be attractive. But I think we're now beyond that, now that there's some attraction to our community and people willing to pay more, then I think it's it's time that we we set the bar where we want to set it. And we saw that even, remember when they want to bring a hotel that didn't make sense here in downtown, that we said, you know, why would we support something that already exists?
Why are we going to incentivize when we've already been able to attract hotels to be successful?
So I think we're, Commissioner Stoudt is right. I think we're at a really good point to now raise that bar to our advantage.
The second business incentive category is by business type. And so here, really, what we're focusing on are the industries that have been identified as having some regional value based on discussions with our partners, such as Borderplex, especially because of the target industry clusters. And so those clusters are, obviously, have military, defense, healthcare, as well as advanced manufacturing, and then anything really that supports that, right? So the second one is if the, there's a company here that has a market for their product that goes beyond regional consumption. So if they are exporting their goods to other parts of the country, other parts of the state, you know, we want to make sure that they can feel supported here. If there's an enhancement to the supply chain, because there's a gap of service that is not currently available, and for this criteria specifically, there are no wage or capital investment requirements. And so a good example of this would be Schneider Electric. Schneider and Eaton are competitors on the market. They offer similar products, but they have a similar supply chain. And so with with Schneider being located here, before Eaton made their announcement to expand their operations here, Schneider engaged a familiarization tour with a lot of their suppliers because they have an interest in seeing their supplier base develop here in the region because it obviously reduces costs for them. And so if there was a company at that time who had come to the county and said, hey, we want to, we want to consider relocating or locating our operations here in support of of Schneider and support of Eaton, and we feel that that investment is going to lead to more Eaton-Schneider types being located in the region because of the enhancement of the supply chain. Judge, to your comments earlier about enhancing the supply chain, especially when it comes to defense and advanced manufacturing, that's a big opportunity for us. And so that is the type of industry that would be, a type of business that would be eligible under this specific category. And so if two of those four criteria are met, it's a five-year term at 50%. If three of those criteria are met, it's a 10-year term at 75%. You can see that there's, even though there's four bullet points on the criteria, the fourth one is just a, for informational purposes, to let the court know that there's no wage or investment requirements on that time. And so this does lend itself, because there's no investment requirement for a smaller business. A lot of the conversation that El Paso makes and the Aerospace Center and the Keck Center for Innovation have been having in terms of skilling up existing mom and pop shop manufacturing operations, those types of industries, if they wanted to expand, would be eligible. If they're only looking at making perhaps $100,000 investment, they would be eligible under this type of category if they met those additional criteria because, and so it's important that this type of incentive would be eligible for small businesses, right? A lot of what we present to the court in executive session especially are the large corporations. But this type of key industry would be eligible for incentives. And so as El Paso makes continues to develop their their ecosphere of manufacturers and companies and businesses, this type of incentive would be something that could potentially be layered on to any coordination with El Paso Makes and Aerospace Center and the Keck Center as well.
Jose, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're bringing this up because if you look at the types of businesses that are popping up left and right as compared to the big BETA and all those other big businesses coming into El Paso, it's great to have them. But the backbone, again, is those small businesses. And I can tell you, there's three that opened up in my precinct just in this year. We had The Yard, which is a brewery, but really a family-friendly place that's about three to four, five acres large. There's Grease Monkey that opened up, and there's Weisenheimer Bar also. And all of them knew nothing of any incentives. And I'll give you an example. There was a young lady some years back that had a little coffee cart. I don't know if you all remember that in the front of the courthouse. I spoke to her one time, and she would hitch that coffee maker, whatever it was, to her car, drive it home, come back in the morning. And I asked her, you know, if the county was able to help you with something, what would you do? She wanted to open up a business in Mission Trails, and I think eventually she did, and the county gave her zero. That's that's a tiny business, but I think that, you know, what is our our county niche in bringing in businesses? I know what the city is going after, but what is ours? And if you look at all these small businesses, especially in Precinct One as the Montana Corridor continues to explode, that we really need to take care of our homegrown entrepreneurs, that they're really making difference in El Paso. And those are the, I consider them like fundamental, foundational businesses that feed into the more large businesses as they start coming in.
As we've, and when we get into the discussion about the investment zones, which are more geographically geographically focused, I think there's more incentives that are structured for that. But in this case, if this if this was a business that went beyond the that was identified as being really supporting expansion of the supply chain directly by being a supplier of goods or services, they would be eligible for a different type of rebate. But we will have a more at length conversation about the the types of businesses and those investments that you mentioned, Commissioner.
Yeah, and how do we get the word out? I think a lot of people just don't know. Wolfherd Trucking, they're on Gateway East, it's a multimillion dollar expansion. Knew nothing of any rebates also. So I think to give them and to let people know that they're out there, especially small businesses that rarely keep up with Wall Street, you know, we'd have to figure that angle out.
And we have a category we're going to discuss in that, Commissioner, but one of the things may be lowering the initial investment amount. I was speaking to a lady yesterday who started a business and was starting her second location, and I kept thinking, and she wasn't going to be able to upgrade the equipment in her second location yet. And I was thinking, how how is this not something we could incentivize? How is this not something, you know, somebody local who is? And somebody else was telling me how much this business has been helping them and their family as they work there. And so we have a category we're going to talk about in a couple of slides, I think, on this on this exact subject.
Yeah, I think I think there's a couple of them, you know, whether it's like the infill or there's there's a couple of categories in, you know, I'm glad you're talking about, you know, supporting smaller businesses, Commissioner, because I think that we learned a lot through faster. It's something that we've talked about, that have brought up many times during strategic planning, that it's great to have 381s and try to attract businesses from outside, but we need to take care of, you know, what's here first. And that'll attract business too, because businesses will look at how we treat our our homegrown folks, and I think that's that's enticing to them, right? I had a question on the the industry clusters. That hasn't changed, right? Borderplex hasn't changed the industry clusters because it's been a while since they did that. You know, that study, I think it came from like in the beginning, like when they were still like Redco, and then they moved to and changed to be Borderplex Alliance. But there hasn't been any update to the industry clusters?
No, and it's probably something that's that's due for an update. And I think so long as we keep it, I think so long as your policy points to that document. And I think so long as we keep it, I think so long as your policy points to that document and doesn't identify the cluster specifically, it gives the policy some flexibility. So in the event that those clusters are in fact updated, you don't have to come back and update the policy. But we'll, you know, I think it's also prudent on staff for us to monitor those, because in the event that there's an industry type that is somehow in misalignment with the court's priorities and values, that we would not want to provide that incentive, right? So one of the criterias that we didn't mention is also that this policy is a guide, right? And so this is intended, similar to the 312 abatement discussion that we had with you all. This does not tie your hands to require you to provide these incentives as the court. This is just for businesses to say, I think my business fits this niche and I can fill in and I can provide an incentive. But if the court, for whatever reason, is in disagreement with the track record of the ownership, the industry specifically, I know that we presented an industry type a few months ago that was a manufacturing facility for a certain type of product that the community may not want, but the investment's there, the wages are very high. And so it was one of those discussions that I think the court needed to have before we proceeded. And so we're very mindful of ensuring that if there's any sensitive nature of the industry type or any other things related to the application or the request, that we bring those before the court.
Thanks. And I was looking, I don't know if there's a newer version of the actual 381 policy as it's written out, but as we were looking at it in regards to this item, just wanted to point out that in the policy, it talks about the list being under Exhibit B, but there is no B, there's only D. So, and it's under Exhibit D, actually. So I just wanted to make sure. And there is no Exhibit like A, B, or C. There's like D and E, but I didn't see any other exhibit. So we might want to clean that up.
Yeah, I think what we're envisioning is today is getting some very high, getting your policy direction in terms of things that need to be included in there. Items like that are also appreciated, because that helps us clean it up. But I mean, effectively, we're proposing a rewrite and a restructuring and folding in your 312 abatement policy that the court recently adopted as well. And you would have this comprehensive repository of all your incentives outlined specifically in one document. And the companies can then say, am I a big corporate business? Am I a small business? Am I looking for rebates? Am I looking for abatements? And it would just be one large document that would have all of these different sections. So all of that will be restructured, but ensuring that we have references that point to the right place is important for us to note as well.
And then one more thing. On this one, did we talk about whether there should be a wage requirement?
No, so right now, there's no wage or capital investment requirements. I think maybe that now is the time for the court to have that discussion, right? I think right now, we heard from Commissioner Stout and from you, Judge, that we're in agreement that all incentives, that all companies offer at least the median county wage. As Ms. Keller mentioned, Grupo Bafar would be a project that, under that criteria, would not be eligible for incentives. And just for the court's discussion and consideration, they did raise, they did contribute to increasing the wage in the census tract that they're located in, and if they primarily hire within that area, that does raise the wages for those residents. But it's, you know, at the court's discretion to set that policy, to set that standard. So that might be a good conversation for the court to have.
Well, I think on, I wouldn't like to, I think it's going forward, because, you know, we've already had conversations with them, and they have that kind of excitement about what's going to happen. I would hate to then change the rules on them. I was thinking more as we go out and get companies that we haven't been in discussion with.
Yeah, this wouldn't go retroactive. It would be moving forward.
But he was saying that.
That is just an example for the court to think about. A recent project that would not have, that would not have met that, that would not be eligible if that was the guidance that the court gave.
Here's the thing I want to say really quick, it's incredibly important. You all do have a clause in there that says you can make exceptions. But we want the direction of, it's got to be some kind of extenuating circumstance to make an exception. And that way, we can tell some companies from the get-go, we're not even going to move it forward. Because if it's nowhere near the median county wage and there's no extra special value, we need the ability to turn them away. Now, that means there are going to be times when the city's incentivizing things and saying, you know, we're adding twelve hundred jobs that pay two dollars more per hour on average than the average call center. But it still doesn't meet median county wage, so we're not going to even bring it forward.
But what I like, not so much, I mean, the businesses, obviously, that want to come in, but also, I don't like the, either Borderplex or the city bringing something and then getting disappointed, because we don't understand why they tell us all these sayings, and yes, you're two dollars less than the county, then we get that little friction going. So I think, starting with them, to say, we're not going to participate under these other criterias, so that we don't get into that, because then I get all these phone calls, like, hey, you got to understand this, you know, this is going to be this and that, but it's two dollars less, and it's a hard conversation. So I think if, at the beginning, Roberto Jose can say, look, this is our criteria, then don't bring it into the court unless you, there's something spectacular that compensates for.
Right. It'll be very helpful to us, because I'll tell you, the other thing that we hear that makes it difficult is we'll be told, it's between us, Albuquerque, and Tucson. And Albuquerque and Tucson are offering this. And we need to be able to say, we don't care what they're offering, they don't pay median county wage. That's not what, you know, the court's not interested.
Betsy, I think the last time, I think, and somebody brought up, are they moving into a blighted area? And, you know, have we described what a blighted area is? And I think like that example you used, they moved into an area that really is very poor. And to offer jobs to local in that little zip code, I think brought up the quality of life a little bit. So is that something that we need to consider? Are they moving into a blighted area? Are they moving into an area in the county that's totally unoccupied, just desert? Will that make a difference?
Well, that's what we're asking for conversation and direction from you all. If you all say, no, they have to meet the median county wage, we won't consider those. Another thing that we hear, I'm just trying to think of examples that we've heard. A healthcare provider or a healthcare, I don't want to say a provider, but like a hospital of some sort, like a surgical hospital wants to move in, but they have cleaning staff and clerical staff that make less than sixteen fifty an hour. Are we not going to incentivize them, even though we know we're a very medically underserved community? Are we not going to incentivize them? And I just, we're good either way. We just want to know, you all to know, those are the kinds of situations we face.
But I think the commissioner's saying that if we identify these areas prior, then we're going to feel more comfortable to say, if it's in these areas, or whatever we call blighted area, then we're going to have a different consideration.
Right.
Because you're right. I mean, if it comes in to where it's going to give jobs, you know?
But I think that was Betsy's point, that we do have this language about there being an exception. So I agree. I do think, from the get-go, we need to let these companies know that we have wages going to be paid. But if we leave ourselves a little bit of flexibility by having this language about making an exception, we can at least have that discussion, and then we can decide if we still want to incentivize the company or not. I'm leaning with Commissioner Stout not incentivizing those companies, but at least we have that ability to have that conversation.
When they're in normal playing field, and I think we should stick to it.
Yeah, when there's nothing special about them, there's not anything special.
I mean, if they're going to open up shop like by the airport and pay seven dollars an hour, there's no way in heck I'm voting for that.
Right, right. And that's what we're saying. Just leave yourselves the flexibility. But remember that your standard is median county wage. But there will be times where there's something, like I'm going to use the medical. I mean, we need as much medical development as possible. It does bring a lot of jobs, a lot of the jobs will be well above median county wage, and it will meet a gap in our community. But not all the jobs would, and so you would have to think, do we want to incentivize this?
And I think the important part is that we're giving notice to these companies, that these are our expectations, right, from the beginning.
And it's almost an incentive, if you choose to go to an area that it's really in desperate need, well, we'll have some flexibility. So that in itself will be an incentive to get that, what we said, targeted areas for the county to say, well, if you're in this area, and I know they did that for a long time in El Paso, where you do, you know, certain zones that they were trying to develop that had different incentives. So maybe we could, but I want to go back to Commissioner Leones on the niche, because I think we should look at, what is the Hispanic Chamber doing? You know, what is the Greater Chamber trying to accomplish? And you and I talked about it from the beginning. When I just started as a county judge, I thought one of the things that people were telling me that we're competing, taking, you know, competing against private, you know, industry, like the clinics and so forth, that was a big thing. But then when I got here, I realized that sometimes we're competing against nonprofits. Sometimes we're competing against, you know, like the Hispanic Chamber or the Greater Chamber. So I would like to see if we could try to figure out, to see we can begin to divide a little bit of the lanes, you know? The Chamber met with me, and they're going to meet with each one of you to talk about what is it, what's their strategic planning? They have more of a binational component that they're interested in. And so then we could sort of look at what they're doing. Hispanic Chamber focuses on, but then there's this gap that nobody focuses on. And in Mexico, they used to call them micro empresas. They would take, for example, perfect example of this lady, and say, how can we grow your business? Or if you exaggerate it, but it actually happened, the gentleman that was doing the shoe shine downstairs, for example. I mean, if we were to take someone like him and say, how can we make you do this better? And maybe have two or three that would work for you in different parts of the county or whatever. Nobody's looking at those people. I think one perfect example that I've seen, the guy's begging to help with veterans, and he has a ghost kitchen, he's a friend of mine, has a ghost kitchen where he rents it out, and he's trying to get veterans to learn how to cook, to increase their skills so that they could work as a chef, or they can work in. I've never seen anybody try so hard to do something for the community, and yet he can't figure it out. He's gone to the veterans, he's offered whatever it is, he has veterans working for him. And I would speculate, and I hope none of this is fair, but that business might not make it in the next six months. Yet it's a very specialized business. We need people like that to have, be able to rent their kitchens, very economically rent their kitchens, to help veterans learn how to cook and all that, that I've just been telling you. But I've seen his struggles, and it's amazing. Like, he doesn't know where to go. And the conversations I had with Hispanic Chambers, like a catch-22. Those people that are really in that situation don't have opportunities to get money. They probably missed their credit quite a bit in their efforts to keep their business going. And those are the ones that need it the most, but yet, nobody wants to talk to them because the first thing they ask is whether or not they have good credit, or, you know, have they had any issues in the past? And all these people that are entrepreneurs, the chances of them struggling are immense. So just, I want to follow up with Commissioner, say, where's the niche that, and we've always been that. You know, I've always seen, since we've been here, and especially this court, that we sort of look for those areas that nobody's trying to address, you know? And I don't know where that is, to be honest with you, but, you know, Commissioner brought up a good point that they're out there struggling with really no help because of their status, credit status and so forth. So just wanted to go back to.
And we've done that, we've done this ourselves with the FASTER program. We partnered with, I think, Project Vida to do microloans.
Hispanic Chamber.
You know, we've talked about this in strategic planning. You know, so maybe it's a good opportunity, since it sounds like, you know, it's something that's worrying most of us. You know, looking at the impact fund for those types of things, you know, we have, how much do we have in the impact fund now? I don't, you know, and I mean, it could be, you know, five hundred dollar loans, or a thousand dollar loans, or grants, or whatever it is. I mean, we did it with FASTER, so, I mean, I think it was very well received, and I think we helped a lot of businesses with FASTER. And so we can definitely build upon that and do what we've been talking about for a couple of years in strategic planning.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to speak to that, Judge, Commissioner Stout and Leon. So one of the things that, you know, I have so much information, I'm making notes as we go. But just to hold that thought, most of the lit review, that the literature review that I have been conducting, they do have areas where they have an economic impact fund, and they fragment the fund. And they say, all right, this percentage is going to go for corporate, this percentage is going to go for micro businesses. And then there's a definition that the SBA has for small businesses. Fifty employees, and they can be making millions of dollars, but that is too large for some of our communities, okay? So basically, you know, we have, to respond to the question about the niches, first of all, an Office of Economic Development, ideally, they need to have a data repository, and a data repository where they are, where they know who is in their backyard. We don't have that information, so we need to build it. And we need to build it with, from grassroots. The way that Betsy and the judge saw yesterday the Aspen Institute operate, that's through data mining. And that's very quickly, but it's not as accurate as going out there, having people surveying and know who's in our backyard. So one of the objectives that we do have, later on, I'll address it in a more ample way, would be through ARPA. We have two different projects. And one of them, you know, the, basically the Lupe here, you know, is joining us, and Mia helped us craft that effort. The other one is precisely identifying those gaps within small, micro, and meat sites businesses. But that has to be done. And I really appreciate this comment, because the court, basically, if you need to know who's your niche, first of all, we need to dedicate an effort in order to have surveys, in order to have a study, in order to have resources, in order to know what are, who are, what are the main corridors? What are the areas with the least, you know, exposure? And gather all of that, and from there, basically, understand our audience.
And ask them what their needs are too.
Exactly.
Like, just engage them and ask the business people, because, I mean, we went through this with HFFI. I don't know if you remember, Betsy, like, we thought, oh, we're going to do a 381 for the grocers, and it's going to be great. And then we reached out to the grocers, and they're like, that kind of model doesn't work for us. And so then we pivoted to HFFI. But I think the most important part of that survey is actually talking to the business owners to see what their needs are, and then we can mold our, you know, policy to fit that.
And if I can, really quick too, and a lot of, and finding them and identifying them and doing this kind of grassroots work is important, because a lot of these people, like the one you're talking about, Commissioner Leon, and the one that I'm talking about, they're not even members of chambers. They're not even in the chambers. These are the little businesses along all of our communities that are, you know, they're just trying to make it on their own. And they could be so much, they could be bigger, do greater, you know, greater service and revenue for themselves, more employees, higher wages, if they had a little assistance. Access to capital, that's a huge thing. Working with local banks, but I'll get off.
Well, but there was a criticism yesterday that the data came from the chambers. I'm worried of ones that don't even get close to a chamber. But they were saying that these are the people that come to the Hispanic Chamber for help and so forth. I mean, that's a different group of what I think we're talking about, that never get to.
One of the efforts, and I'll be brief, because, so we can continue going. And then, once we arrive, I'll go ahead and provide, you know, like the big explanation. One effort is, you know, the retention and expansion of, precisely of mapping. The word is mapping, because we want to know who's there. And this survey is basically, there has to be a lit review for us to be smart about asking the right questions. We want to be in all precincts, you know? So we want to ask, I believe it's a hundred business per precinct, right? So we want to ask, I believe it's 100 business per precinct, right? We want to make sure that we capture that information. And for example, yesterday at the Aspen, no? The Aspen basically did 50 surveys. We want to do more than that. We want to, we want to, we want to really expand on surveys because surveys, basically, there's, there's an art in conducting surveys. The way that you ask a question, you can get your answer. So basically with these surveys, they have to be as neutral as possible, they have to basically encompass and map, and they have to understand all of, all of the, all of the benefits. Back in the day when, when COVID hit, the HUNN Institute did a study with 1,200 small and micro businesses. And the main need of this small and nail salons who are not in a chamber, hair, hairdressers who, you know, are, are micro business of two people or one employee, they need money, they need assistance for software, and, and that's pretty much it. So one effort is again, retention and expansion, and the other one, we're trying to identify the gaps of industries and, and identify those gaps and identify incentives for, for those companies. Yes, Commissioner?
You know, if our, if our overall goal is to improve the economic health of the county, it's not just one thing like the median county wage or whatever, that's important, but we need to decide what are those, you know, criteria that are really important to us that are not being taken into account. And so I think we need to let our economic team give us some ideas of what those are. And I agree with Roberto, we need to find out what, what's in our community, what those businesses are, because some of them, like, like, like your commissioner was saying, they're, they're don't, you know, and, and the judge, they don't go to help for some of, they're so small that they just don't, it's out there. We have a communications department that I think we need to market to these businesses. After we maybe do an analysis of what's out there, what are their needs, Commissioner Stout said, what, what are we, what, what is it that, where, where can we help? I think that's the first thing we need to decide. What are those needs? Where can we help? And are these criteria important to us that we want to help towards that economic well-being? And, and let, let it come up and let, after we do, make those decisions, let our economic team come up with some kind of a, a plan? And then, you know, maybe do some surveys to see, you know, if we can find what type of community are, meaning chambers, I don't think all businesses belong to the chambers. And then, then we can let our econ, our, our, our communications department market to these small businesses that we want to incentivize. Because some of them don't know that there's help out there. And, and those are probably the ones that are struggling and trying to keep in business that we might really want to help.
And I think you're going to find money is always important, but the educational component, the understanding of business component, I think we, we really need to sort of, I think we, we could do that so much better. You know, just, I remember when there was a time when a lot of businesses from Juarez came in here, Maria Chuchenas and all these businesses, and everybody that I, the majority of people that I've talked to failed because they didn't understand the tax system, they didn't understand the code, you know, they didn't understand a lot of the, and it got ahead of them. But it wasn't, in that case, it wasn't so much the money as it was their ability to be successful and connect themselves, like the broadband, you know, like having the equipment that is required to be successful. You know, tho, those are the, the resources that, that are very important. And funding is, but my goodness, I, I know from my own experience starting my first restaurant, I didn't know what, what I had to do, how, the tax situation, you know, what I, I mean, some of the companies that we've seen where the, the sales tax, you know, becomes an issue because they didn't organize themselves to pay it, for example. And then they find themselves, how do I, how do you pay that amount of money after you've put it off for some time? And so anyway, I think, I, I think we're going to find that, that we're probably more suited for that educational component or at least sponsoring the other chambers to make sure that they, you know, we're going to have a relationship with them. I think we also, my, yesterday my comment was that we're also going to be able to say, this is what we would like to see from the chambers. Not just what would the chambers like to see from us, but, and they have their plans, but what do we want them to, to do in support or align themselves with what we're trying to accomplish?
Two comments and then I'll pass it to Jose. I'll give a quick peek of, of, of the, the structure that has been analyzed right now. We, so we have corp, incentives for the corporate level. One of our recommendations is go and do an incentive policy for the micro, small, mid-size company and then the, the mega. So that's a quick peek from, from the, from, from, from another slide. And that's to address, you know, the, the, the comment from Commissioner Coronado. Then Judge, we also have another program through ARPA that is going to be focusing, and it's intertwining part of your first, this is, the, the ARPA right now is, is going to be working as a 360 analysis because it encompass, it, it encompasses a little bit of the, a little bit of your comments when I was new from the listening tours, I have my notes, I, you see a lot of people here, but I know where I'm at navigating. So I have your comments from, from my initial meetings with, with all of you. I know what sectors you want to see grow. I know that you want customer service. I know that you want education, technical assistance. This comment, I'll be brief, we do have in, through ARPA, a great opportunity because we have this money from, from, you know, the federal government for us to explore a plethora of ways to, you know, conduct best practices from the lit review that has been conducted from, from cities like San Antonio, from cities like Irving, from, from counties like Bexar. And we have that great opportunity through the ARPA funding, see where is our highest return of investment? And then once we master that, we can go back and say, look, out of these 15 efforts, I think these three efforts bring the higher return of investment or companies are very happy with them, so let's just keep them and fund them through our general fund. So I'll pass it right now to Jose.
So, so we keep moving forward and. Question, besides the Borderplex Alliance that goes out in markets for, what else is there that, that we as a county are doing besides that?
So I, I think that's where, that's where we need to basically do our assessment of who is here, what we want to incentivize. Because we, basically, I, I, you know, this is, this is all this is lit review from, from how to incentivize cultural, cultural corridors and best practices on, you know, like when Michigan had all the manufacturers leaving town, you know, they, they didn't have any strategy, right? So they had to start from scratch. So we have to learn to respond to your question, Commissioner. I think we have to learn, we have to have boots in the ground, we have to survey, we have to do the analysis, and then we have to come back with an analysis and present it to the court and say, look, these are the type of small, micro and, and large businesses and this are, here's our, our, our assets, our history assets throughout the county and through our, our Mission Trail. And you, we have a concentration in a small cluster of? Do you want to incentivize that? Do you want to establish a, a, a micro policy where if you are selling art, you get an additional percent of rebate or a tax abatement or grant or, 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 or a grant for, for you to be incentivized? The good thing is, we know, we know, we know what micro and small businesses want. They want cash, number one, and they, they, they need education, otherwise they'll have the cash and then they don't pay their taxes. So they want cash and they need assistance with software. Software as, as easy as passing a credit card. Passing a credit card in a software that basically captures the credit card transactions, puts it, puts that and, and exports that into their kind of like tax forms and, and they, they're good to go to pay either their taxes monthly or every three, every three months. So those type of things, that's what they need. So that, that to respond to your question and I'll pass it now to Jose.
And, you know, one more thing that I, just real quick, you know, just going over all these incentives that we have in place, a lot of them have, have gone underutilized or unutilized. The vast majority of them are, you know, the stuff that Borderplex brings us, right? The infill incentives, all the stuff on Horizon, all, all the stuff on the Mission Trail, like, we don't have a, a large number of people, and I, and I don't know if it's because we haven't done a good job of communicating to the public that they exist or if they're not, they're just not what people want, right? And, and so, I mean, I, I think it would be a good thing to analyze first, like where, like what's working and what's being utilized and what's not? And then, and then take, take, then go to the folks and say, is this something that you want, now that you know about it, let's educate you about the fact that we have this opportunity? Is it something that, that you would use?
I, I think as we were doing this review, a number of businesses came to mind, like the ones Commissioner Leon mentioned, those are homegrown businesses, you know, they've invested at least 50,000 and.
Yeah.
Built a business like The Yard.
Right.
You think about everything that happened on the Mission Trail in the pandemic, that all happened without any assistance and there could have been assistance.
Yep, right.
And so I think.
I mean, I think just from the beginning of the creation of this department, I, I, we haven't done a good job of, of.
Marketing ourselves.
You know, I mean, we have all of these opportunities and nobody's utilizing them.
And we haven't funded it.
Well, we have the economic impact.
About that. So I, I think this is a, a great foundation with, with, with federal funding, right? Because one, we want, we, we want to recruit, we want to, I mean, I did industrial recruitment for six years and right now, we, we need to build our information, we need to build our, our intel, in a few words, for us to be able to recruit and, and recruit from micro, for them to tap into cash incentives or technical assistance to, to large corporations. So I think it's, it's part of the momentum that we need to build. I think it's part of the structure that has to be set. But again, we, we need data repositories, we need data and, and, and we need to know who we are as a county so we can target, you know, those specific niches and, and, and we know who to recruit and who to market.
This also goes to some of the other things we've done. We need to partner with the communications team that we've set up. We need to use a lot of the resources and we have, we're still in the process of rebuilding this department. And so we need to, we're working towards those things, but those are the, this is the feedback we need of what we need to focus on.
And, and to, and to Commissioner Coronado's point, like how many, how many staff does a city have for economic development, like 20?
About 25.
Huh?
About 25.
25. And we have five? So we need to.
Seven.
To his point, we need to.
We have to fund the department that's going to do this.
It's a lot of work.
Commissioner, you, Commissioner Stout, you'd asked about the economic impact fund. Just want to make sure to address that before moving on to the next slide. That's one of the areas that I think we do want to discuss with the court. And our lessons learned from the FASTER program, the county administering loans is, is a challenging thing, it puts us in a really precarious position, especially if the ultimate intent is to make those loans forgivable, we're effectively grant making.
Yeah.
And so with the proposals that you're going to see from the American Rescue Plan Act that Roberto mentioned, provides a, a micro grant to businesses so long as they complete a technical assistance foundation and they're provided technical assistance and then they kind of pass all the checks and then they get a check at the end, right? So that might be another option for us to explore deploying capital assistance to businesses, businesses along the Mission Trail who have said, what's keeping you from expanding? We've had these informal conversations and the, but the answer's been, you know, I need $30,000 to do ABC. And okay, well then that's, you know, that, but I think it's important for the court to recognize that when you're making investments, there's going to be a level of failure, right? Businesses are going to fail, they will exit the market and that's just incumbent, that's just part of the, the real economics and so.
Especially when it's like restaurants, bars and the service industry, you know, those ones.
Right.
There's always.
So there's a lot of volatility in some of those investments. And so I think some of the analysis that, that the department can do and continue to explore, will try to mitigate that risk ultimately, but it's not just like investing period, right? It's not, it's not risk free, unfortunately.
Well, and, and again, we already have a similar, something to model as the HFFI. We, that's kind of what we're doing with HFFI.
Actually, yeah, that's true. And so to answer your question on the, on the economic impact fund amount, 9.7 million is available for the initiative, which is the assistance to business in commerce and then 690,000 right now and therefore the HFFI. So we have about 10.4 million in total. Important to note that the intent of the impact fund, it's not outlining your, in your, in the slides today, but that is intended to be, it was modeled after the, the Texas Enterprise Fund, it was a closing fund. If there was ever a gap in funding that a project had that we couldn't meet or did not want to meet with rebates or incentives, or rebates or abatements, we could offer this incentive. It's also intended to potentially support industry by building out capital. So if you had a company that wanted to locate an area and there was no roadway and there was an interest in partnering to expand the road to meet their needs, this would have been a, a potential funding source for that type of investment as well. But to your, to the court's conversation, to the court's point, I think it's also, it's not been utilized, we've utilized it for other purposes to, to meet some, some financial constraint issues that we had in previous budgets, but it's never been used and deployed for an economic development project. So do you think that there's probably some room, as Roberto mentioned, of earmarking a certain percentage to go for small to medium-sized businesses and then figuring out what the structure of that looks like, whether it's grant making, providing capital assistance and making, allowing the court to effectively make those investments in small businesses? The, going back to our project categories, the third one is the one that we see the most often, this is the one that we're most often presenting to the court under, and this is the capital intensive project. So these are projects that make a minimum investment of at least $20 million. The policy right now states that the company must pay the median county wage to a certain percentage of their workforce. Assumedly that would mean at least half of the employees need to earn the median county wage, but the reason why that third bullet point is there is regarding unclear wage requirements is the policy never actually spells out what that percentage is. So if you had one job paying above the median county wage, you would technically meet the criteria, but that's not really the policy intent, I don't think, of the court. So that was never really clearly delineated or spelled out. So we would want to make sure that we came back and cleaned that up as well as, because this is capital intensive, there's no real minimum jobs required. And this is just because these are significantly adding to the expansion of the county's tax base. The, the rebate is structured based on the investment and the higher the investment, the more rebate and for longer term you'll go. It starts at five years, 50%, and it goes all the way up to a, potentially a 20-year, 175, 50% for an investment of over 500 million. So in terms of process and procedure, this is, I think, something that we wanted to talk about because this is something that we know that we've seen a lot of. There are oftentimes, and we, we can use, we can use Meta as an example, most recently, right? Where they'll come in and their initial investments and the jobs created, a lot of the details that we receive are very tentative and we bring that to the court. Well, first what the process is, is Borderplex will receive this R5 from the governor's office and then they'll communicate with the city and with the county. We have other projects that communicate with other municipalities, like Project 1962 is with another municipality in precinct four, where we're working with them closely on this. So Borderplex is the convener of the economic development departments in the local governments. We then look at our policy and we look at the details of the project and we provide a response back to Borderplex who then aggregates that information along with other marketing materials, Commissioner Coronado, to your point about what the benefits of being in the region are. And they package that and they send that back to the governor's office, who then sends that information back to the company. As the company starts to evaluate all of these proposals, they start to say, okay, we want to start meeting with, you know, Team El Paso, we're going to start venturing out there and, and they'll coordinate through Borderplex. And so Borderplex's role here is to facilitate the meetings, but it's really our staff at the county and our partners at the city who are really doing the details of obviously developing the proposals, presenting to Commissioners Court. obviously, developing the proposals, presenting to Commissioners Court. And so, we wanted to make sure that we understood and outlined what the process is, so the court is aware of what that looks like. Some projects move faster than others. And so there's a possibility, like Judge, you mentioned, of, of receiving calls and, and questions from, from partners that may potentially at the Borderplex, like, you all are understanding the importance of this project, or maybe even just a heads-up on that project. So what we'll do is, we'll send that information, and then really, we're waiting on Borderplex to tell us what our next steps are. If a company starts moving quick, they can reach out, and they wanna start meeting with us right away, they may start reaching, but they're always going through Borderplex, which is the nice, the nice thing, because we ensure that we're just in communication with them, and we have weekly meetings with them and with the city. At the point that we feel that the proposal is, has legs, and potentially is gonna be of interest to the, to the public, or something that we're gonna continue to explore, at that point, we'll bring the item back to the Commissioners Court to say, this is Project X, and these are the details of the project, this is the incentive that was proposed based on your existing policy, your existing structure. And, and we get concurrence from the court, like, yes, we have a green light, let's move forward. So that in the event that the proposal does grow the legs that I mentioned, we're ready to start having those more fine-tuned conversations with the company. So the reason I mention that here is, is a company who was looking at making an investment of over five hundred million, if you look at that fourth bullet point on the very bottom, it's a ten-to-twenty-year term stagger, one hundred seventy-five, fifty percent rebate. We'll usually go, we'll start at the lowest, and we'll say that, you know, our policy requires ten years at one hundred seventy-five and fifty percent stagger. And we'll send that out to the company. In the event Borderplex says, well, you know, the city's coming in with fifteen years, can you match that? We'll match that for the purposes of sending out the information to the company, because we're still within the boundaries of what the policy is. But we won't automatically go to the maximum until we come back to the Commissioners Court. So we always try to kind of stave off any going to the maximum or exceeding whatever's in the, we obviously won't exceed what's in the policy, but we won't go to the maximum unless we have some clear direction with the court, or there's a, there's a particular industry that's of significant value that we've already had a discussion with the court on. So we'll send that over to, to Borderplex, and then we'll bring that back here. And then there are going to be updates to this. We saw this with Eaton, if the court recalls. The details that, because Eaton went fairly, Eaton moved fairly quickly, it moved over the span of a few months. That was Project Sun. And as we move forward, there were some details, as we got closer to actually signing the term sheet and ultimately the agreements, once, once the, once the company's legal was involved, the number of jobs that were proposed shifted, because they want, they need to guarantee that contractually, and so, even though that, as, and Judge, I've heard you make this comment before, what ends up happening is they end up making bigger than their investment, they end up creating more jobs, but contractually, what they're gonna commit to might be a different number than the initial number that we share. So long as that remains within the boundaries of the policy, we would like to not have, we, we would like the court to give us that flexibility to have that conversation, knowing that we'll provide those updates to the court, not necessarily in executive session, as we had been. Because right now, our practice has been very much focusing on providing those updates in, in, in executive session for the court. But knowing that we can pass along updates as those conversations continue via the highlights that we share with, with Ms. Keller, who shares that to the court every week as well.
And I wanna piggyback on that with Jose. Before now, we always, so, we've always known, and we've not always brought that back. So like, if the jobs change, and they say, okay, we're gonna drop it by five, we don't bring it back as long as it's still within our policy guidelines for that level. There, this is negotiations, we are back and forth with them. And that's also why it's really important that we have our incentives based on, like, percentage amounts. Because if they don't hit the levels, like, if, if they say, our investment's going to be, they always come in and say, our investment's gonna be one hundred and thirty million. And then, well, it's gonna be one twenty. But it's still in our, it's over a hundred million, and it's still within our category. And so that's, that happens often. And then again, it may still end up being that they spend over the one, one twenty, or whatever they committed to. But we have limits set into our policy, like, this is the maximum rebate you'll get, and it's a percentage. But it still qualifies you for that percentage. And so we used to not bring those back. That is something that we started since Jose and Roberto have been in the department, that we bring back every little tweak, and that's just something procedurally we'd like to, to correct.
And Betsy, Jose touched on something that I think maybe the special sessions that we have, special, or special meetings, that we start sort of focusing on these partners and, and having them present to us, because we don't talk to each other until something comes up on a, on, on, on some, you know, company that's coming in, and then our, our relationship sort of kicks back in again. So I think if periodically they were able to, whether it's Borderplex or the Chambers or whatever, that we're able to spend some time, you know, forty-five minutes or whatever, to talk about where they're at, what, what are they looking at, what has changed, what, because, you know, it's almost like we're blind to anything that they're doing, and then they're blind to what we're doing, and then all of a sudden, we're, now we're negotiating on, on something. So I think it would be good to integrate.
Sure. But most of these negotiations, Judge, we're doing right directly with a company by this point. So, some, but we can definitely have Borderplex and Chamber come present to you all periodically at your special meetings.
I think it'd be, it'd be good, because like I said, we, it takes a really strong relationship when you're going in there. But I hadn't seen the staff for a month or so, and the next thing I'm, we're there. I don't know if what's changed, or their perspective has changed, or, so I think it would be good, or, or maybe we, we had thought about, at our strategic planning, that, that we would invite, you know, remember we send out, that I asked to send out our community partners for, to see what they were, you know, what was their expectations, or maybe, I don't know, just, just a little bit more ongoing relationship, I think would behoove us to, to stay connected.
Also, something, uh, before we get off this, the subject that, on the smaller businesses, like the outdoor businesses, like the junkyard, some businesses that generate unsightly views, that there are some incentives for them to change their facade, fencing and what have you.
What we can also work on perhaps is, is having a standing as part of your special sessions. Might also be good to just receive a general update on all projects that are currently in the queue. We, we have a call, like that weekly with Borderplex, where they give us a rundown of projects, what projects are in the queue, what the status of those projects are. And so we could make that presentation as well, and just give the court any updates on, on all economic development projects. So then we're not coming back every week, but that way the court remains apprised, and you all can have a conversation, ask us questions, and if we need guidance from the court, we could perhaps do that. So we can, we can coordinate.
And the statuses are good, but just to emphasize, I was thinking more of, you know, what are they looking at, you know, what, you know, what's out there? What, what's their philosophy, what are they trying to, what clusters do they think are important? You know, because I have no clue until they bring someone, and then they tell me why it fits in. But I didn't know, you know, what, what had changed, or what clusters they're looking for, or. But I think we need to, and, and you know, Betsy and others, we went to Pittsburgh, we went to Detroit, there's always this kind of unity of everybody sort of putting their strategic plans together, and then everybody moving toward as a community. And we don't need Aspen to, to do that for us. I mean, it's something that we could, I mean, I have a tremendous respect for both of you. I think we could lead that idea of bringing our strategic plans together that have touchpoints. Even, even with Mexico, we even invited, to, in Juarez, I talked to the mayors, and it just never came to fruition, that, that let's share our strategic planning and then see, you know, it, it's like everybody's going in a different direction, I don't think we, we're all coming together.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
You know, one of the, other things that I think we should also consider for, when we incentivize these companies that we're trying to attract, and local businesses even, is that, you know, we, we, we wanna also be mindful of the environmental impact. So if, if some of these companies are, type of companies that are working on being environmentally conscious and that, I think we ought to, you know, take that into account as well. And maybe we ought to look into that and attract some of these companies that are doing that, and give them an incentive. I mean, it can be part of, you know, whatever our economic team develops.
And I believe that's one of.
Rather, rather than just setting out a policy like the city's trying to do, let's just do something about it, you know?
I was just gonna.
One hundred percent, that's, that's the, you know, looking through this with the, with a green lens. When it comes to our economic development strategy, we've, we've talked about this in strategic planning in the past as well.
And that's the idea of those added benefits, right? Those, if we're taking care of your employees at a level that the county is in agreement with, at the level maybe the county would like to see, paying wages, offering benefits, childcare, parental leave, you know, really committed to green infrastructure and, and economic and environmental justice and resilience. Those are added layers that we can, we can do. But then maybe even potentially trying to attract green industry types here as a, as a specific incentive, as a, as a cluster, you know? I think that's a conversation that we can also explore.
But last week I met with ex-mayor Masol from Frisco, that sort of was responsible for getting Frisco in the right direction, and he was looking, and he, one of his criticisms to me was that, that we're, that we lower our expectations. For example, what are you gonna do in the community when you come here? What are you doing at other communities? And we wanna expect that as well, and that, that we have those conversations. And I had remembered that, because I saw Semex, for example, come in here, biggest company in the world, and I can't find one single footprint. There's not a park, there's not a, some statue, something. They came in and left, right? And so that always bothered me, but he was saying that he was looking at our, our, our plan, and he says, we, you know, you gotta ask them, hey, this is our expectation. You know, you're gonna be a community partner, what do you have? What are you gonna put on the table to be successful as a community partner? And he felt that we could be much more aggressive in, in that area. So, I don't know what that totally means. He offered anybody that wants to, you know, talk to him about those, you know, some of the things that they learned. But I think it's, it's a good place for us to say, you know, you know, for example, I'll use Semex again. They did some amazing things in, in Denver. Soccer fields all over with their name and everything. But they never did them here, quite, because nobody, nobody, you know, you, you can't talk to them after they come in. It's too late, but you can talk to them before to say, hey, you know, just by the way, what, I, I see that you did this in New Orleans or somewhere else. Is that something that we could expect for you to do for us?
So I, I think, Judge, to, to address that, starting from the beginning, there are two, there are two policies that I'd like to refer you to. One, and it's in the backup, is the City of San Antonio, and the other one is from Travis County. So Travis County, I mean, they have so many businesses that right now, they're like, no. Now, it's, we are incentivizing companies that are really take care of, of the footprint, and they are environmentally responsible for. So for that, that's where they have an additional incentive percentage. So let's, let's just say, the incentives that we have been reviewing, all except the capital-intensive operation, they provide an incentive up to seventy-five percent, all right? And, and as we tweak the, the incentives, one of the things that I have very present is not to hit the, the wasp nest as far as they can, the, the impact, the financial impact, right? Because we have a bucket of money that is specifically for providing reimbursements, and we don't have loans, or we don't have other, other buckets of money like other counties. So, we could emulate, basically, the policy from Travis County, and we can combine it with the City of San Antonio, where instead of, let's say, offering for every single incentive, a seventy-five percent rebate, we make it sixty. And if you're meeting certain criteria on environmental, all right, let's put it up to seventy-five, right? But that is one way only, I mean, for your consideration, to address this. We wanna incentivize companies that are responsible, that, that for example, if they partner with a state incentive that is called the, the PACE program, that you have heard, which is a financing mechanism, but the financing mechanism is, is basically, you know, to reduce the, the power of lights, you know, where, where, you know, reduction of water.
It's like our energy audit that we're doing here at the county.
Okay. So let's say if they tap into that, then, you know, we, we incentivize them. We, we, we basically provide the cap of a seventy-five percent, or if you want, an additional percentage. So, I, I, again, the recipe is for you to decide, but I think, again, in the backup, you have the City of San Antonio and the Travis County. And if you wanna see the pages, basically, on the Travis County is page eight, and on the, on the City of San Antonio is basically page five. They have exceptional enhancements on the City of San Antonio, just to give you an example. And they say, all right, we have this table, we have, this is, this is our core incentives, but if you're doing A, B, or C, you know, if you're responsible with water, if you're responsible with this and that, you can get an additional percentage. So that is, that is something, that's a way to address the, you know.
I think that's a great way to look at it. That's where we incorporate our values and the things we want for, for the, for the county.
Yes, sir. The last major category for, the county-wide category are for local homegrown businesses. And so these are businesses that either started here in El Paso, or are locating and making their first American presence here in El Paso. Far is a good example of a company that qualified in this category, who came in and, it's a, it's a Mexican food distribution company that opened up their American operations here in El Paso. And so, the minimum investment, fifty thousand, cannot exceed twenty million. If it exceeds twenty million, then we switch it over into the capital-intensive category. Must pay minimum median county wage to a certain percentage of workforce. And then you can see that the, the certain percentage of workforce is reflected in your rebate structure for this category. So, if you go back to the previous slide, I talked about the capital-intensive. The, there was an unclear minimum, the median county wage requirement was unclear, because it's never referencing your structure under the.
And what we're hearing now is you want the median county wage.
Oh, let's see, there we go, we just turn it on and off, which is the beginning of every good IT solution. And so here in your homegrown business, if you have an investment of fifty K, and fifty percent of your jobs exceed the median county wage, five-year term at fifty percent, investment of a hundred K, and seventy-five percent of your jobs exceed median county wage, seventy-five percent over ten years. So both of those criteria have to be met. So if you had a company who made a hundred thousand dollar investment, but only fifty percent of their jobs exceeded, exceeded median county wage, they would be eligible for a five-year term and fifty percent rebate, and certainly met one criteria, right? So we're judging it based on their lowest-rated criteria, whether that's the investment or the amount of jobs. But this is a good example of a company, of, of an investment that is allowed, where not all the jobs have to exceed the median county wage. And so I think as the court has that conversation, based on what we've heard, wanting to raise that as the, as the standard, we'll have to maybe introduce some of those quality job thresholds here for, for that median county wage requirement. And so these are positioned, again, so this is intended for a lot of the businesses that we've discussed that have opened up shop here in the community. Is there any discussion on this? I know that Ms. Keller mentioned potentially, based on conversations she's had, Commissioner Leon, the conversations with the owner of the, of the coffee cart outside the courthouse. Is that minimum investment a good, at a good amount, should that be lowered? And then, you know, I think related to this is also the possibility of us offering capital incentives, like capital assistance in terms of cash, to, to local homegrown businesses as well. I think that's another big need that, that we have. As Roberto mentioned, there's a need for software and digital assistance in terms of having profit and loss statements that are not done on the back of. digital assistance in terms of having profit and loss statements that are not done on the back of napkins, which during the Faster Economic Recovery Program, we actually saw businesses that were doing their P and Ls on, 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 you know, butcher paper and things that they have in their, in their kitchens and their restaurants. And we need to ensure that they are sound as an organization, as a business, before continuing to make those investments. So I think those are some of the discussion points that we're hoping the court would have on local homegrown businesses. And then any other feedback that you may have as well.
And, and you might, this is an area where I really think you might yourself a lot of flexibility on the, the median county wage, because like the, the, the coffee shops and the, as they're starting up, first of all, some of them have family members as employees. You know, they're, they're not necessarily paying the median county wage as they get launched, or they start, or try to expand and break in. And you might want to leave yourselves a lot of flexibility in this area. And, and another thing might not just be us providing direct capital, but it might be us providing some kind of reserve fund and working with like a micro lender or, or somebody-
Yeah, we should partner with a CDFI or-
Yes, yes.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that structure needs to be, recommend against the loans, right? I think there's a lot of potential to think about these loans being revolving, but the county's administered revolving loans before for housing, it didn't work out.
Didn't work out, yeah.
We've run into a lot of questions and issues with the Faster loans that we did, that we're trying to get to be forgivable.
Well, that's again, HFFI is a good model, because we partner with the CDFI and they do the loan, right?
It'd be great.
You know, we say, okay, you gotta put some skin in the game, and you, and you have to, you know, you'll get a grant from us, but you also, you know, if, you, you can put some skin in the game in, in, in some of the, the CDFI.
And then the county could potentially buy down the interest rate.
Right, exactly.
Right, and that's, because that's cash, that's a cash payment to the, to the lender. And so the, I think as long as the county's investment is being made that way and it's not tied back to repayment, it puts us in a, in a, operationally in a better position and just creates less administrative headaches for, for the agency.
And so, and so y'all are asking us for more feedback on how to, how to go about helping the, the small businesses, but I think we need to do the, you know, outreach to them before, you know, before we start making concrete decisions on what programs we want to use. But I, I mean, I think we can look at some of the stuff we did with Faster as, as, as models. I think that, and, you know, we probably wouldn't preclude a lot of people from being able to participate, but I think historically underutilized businesses should be prioritized. You know, that's minority women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, when it comes to, you know, the, the incentives that we're gonna give to smaller. Because again, we don't have, you know, just enough money to help everybody, right? So we have to prioritize, and, and some of the criteria to prioritize, I think we need to start with, with hubs.
I think what's helpful is giving some boundaries on, not just saying what are your needs, but giving them options, saying like, if the county were to offer X, would, would that be something that would help your-
Right.
-your business, right?
Sure, sure.
So knowing that we would have consensus or direction of the court to, to consider offering technical assistance grants, capital assistance, you know, I think a lot of businesses are just challenged with liquidity in terms of making purchases and things, and that's really the, the obstacle in their way. It's not how to make a good product, it's not how to run the business. It really is, I just don't have the cash on hand that I need to, to do this, but I know that if I did, I'd be successful. I've heard that story a lot from different business owners.
And-
I know we don't have the personnel, but, you know, all the organizations that come in, one thing that they always say has been like, the greatest turnaround is case management. And, and I think that's, if you look at, a little bit sad, and, I mean, one of these great stories but sad, because if you look at Bodega Lawyer, you see that their sophistication, you know, you've got an engineer from UTEP, and you've got a, a woman that knows. Because they have that level of sophistication, that's what's made them very successful. That they know how to do that, they know how to apply, they know how to continue, you know, looking at growth, and they know how to- And, and I think too often we, we sort of, okay, here's the money, but then there's no case management component to see, you know, how else can we help you? And I think this is where we can partner, for example, if we were to give money to someone and partner with the Hispanic Chamber, for example, and say, hey, you know, we're, we're providing this money here, but can, can you do some case management? Because it's that first year that we all know, I mean, it's-
Or SBDC at, at, at EPCC, right? The Small Business Development Center?
They do a lot, but we sort of hand the money, and then we forget about them, and we see how many made it and how many didn't. But there, and I know it's difficult, but I think that El Paso Community College would be, that's a great area.
Yeah, we can, I mean, outsourcing that type of, that type of service, since we don't have the capacity right now internally.
There's gonna be, let's see, one, two. So, so the SBA, that, you know, the SBA program that we're working on, it's gonna be one way for them to receive technical assistance, and that's two hundred and fifty thousand. And then there's, there's, there was F and A for, for the county, so that's a ten percent. And then the rest of the two hundred and forty, it was gonna be for marketing, for, for marketing. And, and businesses can double-dip, basically, and say, all right, you know, this business completed their technical assistance, now they, they know how to file their taxes, now they do a little, they know a little bit of, of management and operations of their business. Now they can, they can tap into additional resources for marketing. So that's one program that, that, that we have out there.
This is for Mission Trail.
Uh-huh, for the Mission Trail. Now, the other program that we want to have is the one that Mr. Landez was referring, where we want to basically provide a grant after you receive your completion of, you know, technical assistance. So that's the other product that, that we wanna, that we wanna have, because we do understand that the money that we provide out there in whatever form, they need to know how they, how, how they have to be efficient about it. Otherwise, you know, they, they'll end up, you know, failing for whatever reason. So that's, yeah, we have those two products.
One of the, one of the first things that comes to my mind here when, when we're talking about the minimum investment of fifty thousand dollars, I don't know if that's a threshold that's too high.
Right, that's another thing that we wanted the court to discuss.
And, and, I mean, I guess we need to also define what investment means, because is that an investment in like, I mean, you, you, you're buying a, a building, or you're buying a, a, a property?
Equipment.
Uh, equipment.
It's personal, it's personal and real property.
Is it, is it like what you're gonna pay, like we, you know, you know, your, your, your investment in payroll and that type of thing?
Right, and so with Jose saying it's personal and real property, this is where I think we need to, I think we should get rid of the minimum investment myself, and here's what I would propose. We take these homegrown on a case-by-case basis. It might be, I'm gonna have to put up three months' rent, and I, that means I won't have money for this, and I'm looking for some, just until I can get to this point in operations, you know? I mean, there's-
Not a blanket approach.
Right, I think this needs to be a very case-by-case situation. The, the business owner I was speaking with yesterday, and her employee, is renting a new location, buying out, or buying out someone else's loc- place, and picking up a second location, but that's, that buyout was her major investment to start with, but it probably didn't hit fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
But now she's, you know, capital poor for a little bit to be able to upgrade the equipment. So I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some case-by-case analysis. How much do they have to lose in the, in what, what's going on? That, I think we just need a lot more flexibility.
There's also some challenges that Roberto and I have, have discussed with regarding, regarding tenants who lease space because their personal property is not, in, the, the taxation of their personal property is being paid by the business, but it's not directly billed to them, only their real property, so they're, I mean, excuse me, the reverse.
Reverse, yeah.
The, the, the real property is not being paid by them, but their personal property, their equipment. Let's take Three Missions Brewery as an example, of a business that is leasing space from a, from a land, from a, from the landowner. But they've retrofitted that space, and the valuation of that building is affected by the general development and activity in that area, right? So they're paying more, they may see increases in their lease agreement as a result of the increased taxation, but there's really no way to account for it. And Roberto had found, and I'll, I'll ask him to speak a little bit about Travis County, if we can work with property owners, there might even be a way to work with leasing tenants on providing those incentives which, you know, help us ensure that if they're not making property, real property investments, that they're still paying more in taxes, that might be another way to structure their rebate.
Yes, so for Travis County, their main goal that, that the court has over, over there is to close a gap between the rich and the poor, and it's even there in the policy, right? So what they do is they, they incentivize the leaser as well, aside from us. But then the agreement, like Jose was saying, the agreement in the lease has to provide information about how much they would be paying on, on taxes. And the way that they incentivize is they do a tax abatement. So basically, the example that Jose was giving about the Three, Three Missions Brewery, that is a corridor that the court wants to enhance. It's gonna have additional sidewalks, it's gonna have additional trees, and all of that is, as you know, is gonna be increasing the, the tax value. Where it's gonna get to a point where those small companies, they're not gonna be able to pay, you know, the additional, you know, taxes, right? So the best practice, and, and the recipe for, for this county is just a tax abatement for, for the taxes, for, for those small businesses. So yeah, that's, that's what they have on the plate over there.
But, but I'm, I'm a little confused, so you would, you would have them calculate what they would pay on their, on their PP?
You'd have to, yeah, I mean, it, the process would have to evaluate, and I think part of that would be engaging Travis County and seeing how successful it's been, because it does require a property owner who's leasing the space to also be, not a party to, but at least be involved in the conversations with their tenant.
And is, is it like you're having the property, you're, you're, you're providing the incentive to the property owner, and you're, and you're, you create a contract with them so that they-
Right.
-make sure that they do pass down the, the-
That might be one structure of doing it.
To the, to the renter?
Right, so if we anticipate the savings being two hundred and fifty dollars per month, that, that savings would be guaranteed to be reduced from their, from the rent, because they're, they're, they're receiving that rebate on their property taxes, yeah.
Or not raising the rent.
So there's, there's multiple ways that we could look at it, you know, rent control approaches, or lease, or lease control approach is another method as well.
Can, real quick, just going, going back to the, the slide before, the capital intensive projects, I just wanted to throw this out, there's a conversation that I was having with my staff yesterday, and a question came up, and I, you know, I, I mean, I want to hear from the economic development experts, but, you know, it's, we're, you know, we have the structure set up to be, to be incentivizing at a higher level the people that can probably, that have more money, right? So, I mean, should it be the inverse, like we're, we're, or shouldn't we be incentivizing the people that need it more instead of? So, you know, on an investment more than five hundred million dollars, that's the, I mean, I understand like why we did it this way, because we want, you know, higher investment, and so we're, we're, we're offering a higher incentive, but, I mean, somebody who has five hundred million dollars like Meta, they don't really need that much of an investment or, or, or an incentive, right? I mean, these, I, I know we're trying to compete, but like, they can pay for it, right? So it, it, it-
There's a stat-
We're kind of like doing things weirdly, because we're incentivizing, you know-
It's part of an ecosystem, though. Sorry, Roberto, I, I agree, Commissioner, like, but at some point you have to have an overall ecosystem. And sometimes those larger, like, look what happened to Amazon. Look what it did for small business. So you have an overall ecosystem, and there has to be investment in all of it. The thing is, is a lot of our investment has been in those, those meta-type. Now, and I do think there's a good reason for the meta one. That's our first massive-
Yeah.
-data center.
No, yeah, of course.
But it is part of an overall ecosystem where it does help spur the, the employment and the investment and the other supporting and supply chains, and so, but we need to-
It seems, it just seems kind of intuitive to be giving more money or, or more, more incentive to the people that have more.
Yes, I mean-
You know? They're not the people that have, that need, that need it more, right?
There, there are two ways that, you know, communities incentivize. They incentivize the small and, and the, the ones who need to grow, and they incentivize what they want to capture, precisely to, to the point of Ms. Keller, you know?
Right.
So you will never have the economic impact, direct, indirect, or infused, that a Meta or an Amazon, they do if, if you put all your eggs in the basket of micro and small. Uh-huh. And, and basically the other thing that, that, it's, it has to be, and it's, it's already in the, in the slide that is in the SWOT analysis. So one of the threats of communities is that they incentivize too much only one sector, or they, or they don't incentivize other sectors. And again, the, the purpose is to be able to bring in the, the big corporations that leave money, because they have a huge payroll, and those people are putting gasoline, they're buying tires, they're, they're building their houses, and, and that's the, that's part of one economic impact. And then the other, like, the other example is those small businesses that need cash, that need, you know, technical assistance to grow, that need software for their credit cards. So that is a two-pronged approach that most of the communities that have succeeded, that have a robust incentive in, in a, in a robust ecosystem, basically, they, they have. So it's a two-pronged approach.
No, and, and I understand, but maybe, I guess the point is like, you know, looking at, looking at the percentages, right? That, that we're, because it seems to me like the, the little guy who's gonna invest fifty thousand dollars that doesn't have a lot of cash could, could also, you know, use a hundred percent, you know, in, in incentive, just like the guy who has five hundred million dollars, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't, I don't know how, how to make it right, or how to make it- I mean, I'm not saying that we, that we, I'm not saying that, like, we stop trying to bring in, and, and, and the big investors, but-
I think a little bit of it is compared to when we're making purchases, and we know that if we buy in bulk, we receive better pricing. And so, and that same thought process here being that the larger the investment, the larger, and, you know, to follow the metaphor, the larger the purchase, the more discount price you'll receive, the more incentive you'll receive, right? And so I think that to Roberto's point, these are really, those larger incentives are generally geared toward the companies you want, right? And I think we have, under like the homegrown business, you have a, you have a local business who makes a fifty thousand dollar investment, who's gonna receive five years of fifty percent. A twenty million dollar corporation is gonna receive the same five-year fifty percent rebates, right? So there is some parity in terms of structure, but then I think as we start getting into mega projects, those are the ones that we really want to try and provide incentives to. And then, you know, I think the, one of the biggest pitfalls of economic development incentives and local governments providing incentives and rebates and everything, is really, is it a race to the bottom? Are we competing against each other to a point where we're all going to make investments that are going to financially, negatively financially affect our, our local governments? So I think that's something we have to be vigilant of.
Yeah.
But generally, incentives are structured this way, where the larger the investment is, the more rebate or incentive the companies are offered. So as we're evaluating this, not only for soundness and alignment with values with the court, I think we also have to be mindful of how this affects our competitiveness when we're out there, and what businesses will see. So I, I do think, though, that there's a, there's a fairly, and I think we're looking to bolster that balance between the mega corporate projects and really providing more assistance and incentives to the small businesses out in the community. And so it's, it's with that, that as we're discussing this, the small homegrown, is there consensus to remove the, the minimum investment, and as Ms. Keller mentioned, doing it case-by-case? Okay, so we'll make sure that we modify that. And again, this is just, you know, general direction, this is gonna be a massive undertaking to bring all of these policies back into alignment and draft. But as we go forward to share this information with, with small businesses, and we ask them- But as we go forward to share this information with small businesses, and we ask them, is this the kind of assistance that you would need? I think one of the things we wanna mention is that the court is looking to remove the investment cap, or the investment amount, the minimum investment amount, and that really kind of opens up the door for a lot of different businesses. Any other discussion on these four? This is the last countywide category.
I think the only thing, I don't wanna let go is the creating a supplier base, but that we go look for, one of the things we talked about, like, in aerospace, is that you might not realize that you're doing certain things, but it might be something small that you could contribute, but they have no awareness to the aerospace. But in that conversation with the mayor, one of the things he was saying is that you look at how much of the money is going out to suppliers outside of the community, and then you incentivize, like, you know where they're at when they begin, and then you incentivize them for starting to look at suppliers here in El Paso, which then, obviously, that's where we have these small businesses that can take advantage of that. So just the supplier base, I think, is so important. It's obvious that supposedly, they recognize El Paso as one of the most underutilized in the country of utilizing suppliers, that the majority of what we do goes outside of El Paso. And so I think if we know that, and I think Commissioner Coronado will focus on that to say, if we know that, then let's do something about it. If we know that we're missing out on our local companies, even the small ones, then what are we gonna do about it? Nobody else, I think, is gonna focus on that, that, you know? But I think that incentive that he talked about, and it's, I asked him to talk to Betsy about that, because it was an incentive, and of course, he would be involved, but he says it's just in millions and millions of dollars that were generated to Frisco because it was a small community, so, you know, everything they did was outside of Frisco. And they started saying, okay, we'll incentivize you for the percentages that you start focusing on suppliers that are from this, from this community. And he said that he felt that was one of the things that really started making a difference in generating a lot of money. He said, you're talking about millions that we, that you never had, you know, that were never part of your revenue, and all of a sudden, you're getting money back to the community because just of the policy change that was made.
That would be, you know, ensuring that our businesses, these large corporations, are aware that there's gonna be some ask of them, some commitment of them to help develop their own supply chains, not only importing, you know, suppliers, but then also identifying kind of a mapping of what exists in the community today that can be upskilled.
Even myself, I was really excited about the fact that suppliers were going to follow Amazon, or they were gonna follow TJ Maxx, or, you know, Meta. But I thought, well, wait a minute, you know, that's great, we're gonna have more companies coming in here that are gonna be their suppliers. But once again, going back to Commissioners Dowd, our homegrown, you know, you know, let's be excited about bringing other suppliers from elsewhere, because they were offering in a lot of the conversations, as you well know, you know, we're gonna bring suppliers in, they tend to follow us, but, you know, even I missed out to say, that's great, but what can you do for suppliers from El Paso?
I do know, I do know that Amazon tried to use a lot of local contractors when they came in to build the building. I don't know about, but the long-term suppliers is, I think, what you're talking about, like, for the operational suppliers.
Yeah, like the products that they move through their distribution center.
I mean, it's products and services also.
I mean, or the vertical, I mean, yeah, like, all the products, like, if we're trying to foment the aerospace industry, like, this widget, this gadget need to be produced here locally by homegrown communities.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of spinoffs to that, too, also looking at, like, printers for medical printing, you know, you need certain ISO certifications to ensure that you can print FDA-approved labels and things like that.
Vertical integration is the coin, is the term of...
We constantly see that, like, we hear something, but then we don't have the infrastructure. For example, Amazon reached out to me that they were really struggling with the packaging, the foam, kind of the bubbles and all that. And so I located a company that did that, but they didn't have the infrastructure to supply them.
Right.
They do mostly to Mexico. And it was like, like, wow, this would be amazing, but then he didn't have the opportunity, and then, you know, we go do something else. And I think we have to figure, if we make something happen, then where do I pass it to so that it can continue? That was one of the things from our trips to Aguascalientes or Queretaro, we get to meet a lot of people that are interested in coming, but then who takes it? We do a good job of getting them here, but then who takes it to the next level, you know? And I think that's why we don't have the infrastructure to be able to, I mean, we do get some good companies wanting to, but then I think, like, there's no place to say here. You know, we're trying, we try, all of us, Commissioner Dowd, you, everybody, we're trying to, well, you know, talk to this guy, do this, or maybe this would help, but then we step away from it, and then we find out that it didn't take place, so.
So two things that I wanted to mention, and, you know, we're very happy Lupe's here, because Lupe chairs the Aspen Institute for El Paso, and I don't know, Lupe, if, on one of the conversations, once Dominique and her team, because they partner with a muscle agency that does, has two economists, and, you know, and they do the data mining, and that's a lot, the power that they have, right? So one of the recommendations that actually came out from the county, the Economic Development Office, was precisely to focus on the supplier development of the military industry. And this was through the briefings that Jackie did before going to the AAUSA. We understand the amount of revenue that goes into those industries, but it's very hard to tap into those companies, because those companies, they have their headquarters outside of El Paso. So for us to connect them with a smaller supplier, they don't even, they don't even respond to the phone. So the strategy here is to go up, you know, at the higher level, through the headquarter, for them to basically, kind of like funnel it down, for us to get the door open, and then do a supplier development program. So I did, I did in New Mexico, supplier development precisely for large corporations. Sometimes companies, they don't have the ISO 9000, sometimes they don't meet with a criteria, like you're saying, sometimes they don't meet with the demand, and there's, there has to be like a task force where there's supplier development strictly companies, because just think about this, you know? We have $134 billion crossing through our port of entry, which is an economic development tool. We have, in one year, from 2022 to 2023, we had $18 billion in the economy, and that was not economic development, I bet. This was foreign direct investment because of the nearshoring and the ally shoring. So our largest question here are, you know, is how do we connect to that stream of money, which is huge? It's in the billions of dollars. And so we have two pillars, that one and the military. So going back again to the Aspen here, I had to leave yesterday early because we have a fellow from the ERC, okay? They didn't make justice on the announcement, but we got the fellow, okay? And that fellow is, the scope of work that we drafted, that Jose and I drafted, is to precisely focus on supplier development, and one of the areas that we're touching is aerospace. So I think, right now, we're starting to put all the ducks in a row to start building momentum, and there's more information, you know, through the ARPA. So I'll pass it to Jose not to, you know, make this more extensive.
Just as an FYI, I didn't know that the procurement office for the military, for Fort Bliss, was here at one time, and it went to San Antonio. How that happened, I mean, I don't know what we could do about it, but...
Doesn't it have to do with the level of general that is at the base, or something like that? I mean, if you have a, like, above a three-star general or something like that, then the procurement office is here because they're the ones that are...
I was told that during the BRAC, it slipped on us, that nobody focused on that. And next thing we know, it was in San Antonio during the BRAC, you know? And so, I mean, I'm just saying that because we don't want those missed opportunities to happen in the future, to say, you know, we had this, we no longer have this. But, you know, we've talked about the relationship with General Eisenhower, I don't think we could ever have a much stronger relationship, and yet we talk a lot about different things, like, they've been very supportive of the Veterans Capital and all that, but I've always said, you know, we gotta move away from meeting, having galas with Fort Bliss, to really sitting down and seeing, and he's one that would be very available, and if you look at the timeframe, he's probably very close to leaving, and we need to take advantage of that relationship. Because typically, what is it, three years, Betsy, more or less, that we've seen with Maddox, and he's about his third year now?
Judge, exactly where he's at.
But I mean, just, you know, just sort of things that we see that we need to capitalize on, and we're very fortunate that now you guys have that focus on helping out on those relationships.
One more thing I wanted to bring up before we move on is, and I don't know if we have, you know, the capacity to do this or not, but just, you know, I think one of the main reasons why we wanna do economic development at the county is to, we talk about it all the time, is to change also the burden on taxpayers, right? Because we need more corporations paying taxes than residential, and we don't have that. And even though we've done all this work over the last 10, 15 years, economic development, you know, partnering with the city, with Borderplex Alliance, that ratio keeps getting worse. I mean, if you look at CAD, I mean, some of it has to do with, you know, the economic factors, whatever, but I think when I first started, it was like 65% and 35%. You know, 65% residential and 35% commercial and industrial. Now it's 70% residential and 30% commercial and industrial.
That's a good point.
So what metrics are we using to show that the work that we're doing and the policies that we're creating are actually having an impact on that? You know, because, because if, I mean, if we're, if we're, you know, spending a lot of time doing this, you know, we need to make sure that we're having impact. I know that every time, for example, Roberto, you come and present to us a project, there's a sheet on there that has, like, the projections of how much tax is gonna be, you know, derived, and the economic impact with the jobs and everything like that. But have we ever actually, like, gone back and looked at whether that projection was actually hit? I mean, or, I mean, are these policies that we've been implementing actually reaching the goal that we set out for them to reach?
I think, you know, it's just a matter, I think there's the know-how, and I know the recipe of the cake, I just need additional bakers. Thank you. Okay, so, I mean, just by, just by doing a quick glance and filtering through cobblestone and seeing every single 381 that we have active, the amount of the investment surpasses the amount of the incentives on those 381s, number one, as an economic impact. And number two, I think you just kind of like, and, you know, I kind of responded to your question on why we wanna bring those mega projects with such a high level of incentive, it's precisely to close the gap between, between the tax, the taxing, right? Because...
But that's all we've been doing, pretty much, right? And the gap is not, the gap has widened.
So that's why we wanna keep having policy to attract that. You know, eventually, you know, we have to raise, I mean, we have to raise additional companies, additional, you know, like, corporations and additional mega businesses for us to basically say, all right, now, we have so much businesses around, we have so much tax collection, franchise tax, that we, that the residential level, it has to no longer be the muscle for the county, right? So that takes time, right? But that is one, you know, approach to why we have to keep, you know, moving forward with those type of incentives for mega, for mega projects. And then, to go back again to your specific point, I, for the annual report, I do recall providing the communication department, and I'll be very happy to provide in the highlights, not this week, but next week.
Tomorrow.
The small analysis that was done real quickly, as far as the 381s that we have, how much CapEx they raise, and how many incentives. And some of these companies, you know, they forget to cash their incentives. So my, also, one of the things that I already know it's there, that I wanna do, is to basically understand how much money we have to disencumber. Because when we bring in a company with a 380, with a 380, right, we encumber funds for that company, and we do not touch those funds, I mean, that will be the best practice, until we basically cut the check, and after 10 years, and we basically, you know, we're done, we clean our hands with that contract, right? But there have been companies that have, they haven't checked, I mean, they haven't requested that, and that's something else that I wanna do.
Those funds are still encumbered, but they haven't been paid out.
Correct. And a quick example is Foster Electronics.
Because they haven't come and asked for them.
Right. And that is something I've seen commonly, even before I was in El Paso County, with economic development agreements, a lot of times, the companies will want the agreement. It's almost like something that they want, but then they never follow through with actually using it.
And Roberto, are some of those agreements that were, we inked them years ago, and they're finally gonna come into fruition where the rebate is lifted? An example would be the shops at Farah. I think now they finally are off that rebate, and now they're generating more taxes. So are we in that timeframe where, you know, once they start hitting, then it's gonna start shifting the balance a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Some of them, okay, I don't think the Fountains at Farah are off rebate yet.
The Doubletree, maybe.
The Doubletree is definitely off. But they, a lot of times, too, we have to remember, we inked these dills, the Metas, the Facebooks, and the Amazons, I'm sorry, the TJ Maxx are some of the exceptions. We inked these dills this year, and the company doesn't even start, isn't open sometimes for three years, or up and operating. We had one that, I think, 10 years later, they still had not been able to, they ran into legal stuff, and we had to kill the agreement. So sometimes it doesn't get started, and so we are then, the payouts are much later, and they start much later than we expected.
Well, I mean, and that's, that's fine, because either way, you know, you're not...
Right.
They're not starting, and so you're not paying them out before they're starting, but, but yeah, sometimes that's the case, but, yeah, I mean, it's interesting that you have some companies that actually don't come and ask for the rebate.
And it could be a matter of, you know, the person taking charge of the accounting got another job, and he said, okay, okay, here's a stack of stuff that you have to do, and they don't follow up, you know? Simple as that.
You know, one of the other things that we're not looking at in terms of the benefit of the megas that come in is sometimes they bring, you know, maybe not all the employees they're gonna hire, but they bring some in, and those people are gonna buy homes here. So in a sense, they're adding to the tax base and helping the residential, because now it's less of a burden, because there's more of them. So that, we also need to look at that aspect. So it's not just, you know, it's a double aspect that they're doing, they're adding to the economy, they're adding to the actual tax base for residential. So that, in a sense, kind of lowers the tax burden on the residents, because we're bringing in more people. So, you know, that's just another...
Yeah, no, that's definitely part of it, for sure. People getting paid high wages and then they'll purchase things.
Okay. So the next category...
So the next category of incentives are specific to geographic areas. So here are the existing eight zones that you can see that are in the policy. You have downtown and central, the Mission Trail, the county airport, the Torneo Port of Entry, Northwest Investment Zone, North Gate Transit Oriented Development, which was, I put it in there because at the time there was a 381 development that was being discussed in that area, the Alameda Corridor and then the Horizon City Investment Corridor. So we'll go through these slides, we'll try to go through these slides fairly quickly in the interest of time, but the incentives are available, the incentives that might be available to a business or an enterprise vary by the zone. And so in some instances, you have some that are not included in here for Mission Trail, like the ones to replace the grants that we make to replace nonhistoric era appropriate fencing. So in other words, chain link fencing along the Mission Trail to try and beautify the corridor, we offer grants to that. In your strategic plan this year, one of the goals under, the objectives that we have under economic development is a partnership with Planning and Development to introduce a new order that would help regulate outdoor businesses. That was something that the court discussed during your strategic planning session last year. That order would, as it's been drafted by us and working collectively with Planning, would require outdoor businesses to screen of certain types, to screen their operations so you can't see it from the street. This is done in an attempt to reduce blight, improve and kind of beautify corridors. So scrap yards, junkyards would be, some of them already do it because they have a financial interest in making sure no one knows what they have back there. But there's, you know, there's an added benefit of doing that in the sense that you can't see the business recycling manufacturing, recycling facilities would be another type of business, flea markets. And so what can be done to tie, you know, just before we get into these investments is those may be required by right as planning works through that with legal, bringing that item back to the court. That screening might be required by right, by virtue of this order that's authorized under the, this authority that's authorized under the local government code for counties. What may be considered by economic development is that in the event of a screening blighted property being regulated by the county, by blighted property being regulated by the county and outdoor business, instead of having them put up sheet metal screening, which would maybe meet the criteria, we could ask them to consider something more ornamental or that would really kind of enhance the quality of their development and really beautify the area like something with masonry instead. So those are just some examples of some incentives that were not, are not included, but that might be on the horizon or that are currently in our policy that have more to do with beautification and specific to the Mission Trail, beautifying that existing corridor.
And Jose, before we leave this slide, one of the glaring areas that's missing is the Montana, East Montana Corridor. In the next seven years, we're going to have about 12,000 new homes. That's not maybe, that's for sure, that's coming. And I know Commissioner Stott talks about the sprawl and as much as we want to control it, it doesn't seem like we can. And you have to remember that these people that are moving out there are going to need services too, regardless of the sprawl, because I agree with you. But that's something that's missing there that is huge. I mean, that area is exploding. The CIP code, what is it, 28 is just exploding. All those new businesses I spoke about a while ago are on that corridor. So I think that's a big glaring hole that we need to add.
So there's, so in recognition of that, you know, you might have, there's some existing gaps that you might have, like you might have a small business in Awadulce who just doesn't have the, doesn't meet any of these criteria. So there's some recommendations about adjusting the zones. There's a lot of existing pre-qualified designated zones that help measure economic opportunity or lack thereof, right? So you have like empowerment zones, which include a lot of El Paso's lower valley and including some of the key areas that we consider high-performance engines for the region like the medical center, area where UMC, Children's Tech, the MCA and other healthcare industry is going to locate. So there's potential to consider revising those zones as opposed to making them geographically unique. If we want to keep a couple of those for some of our assets, like at the airport and the port of entry, I think that's probably a good narrow focus. Mission Trail is unique in the fact that it's, you know, heritage tourism and always kind of been a niche of the county. But opening it up to other areas, to Commissioner Leon, your point, you might look at qualified census tracts. The federal government also has an environmental and social justice and economic justice screening tool that qualifies census tracts and looks at, evaluates different demographics to see if there's any risk in those areas and they look at poverty rates and, you know, and so these are opportunities where you would want to potentially foster investment because creating more community centers helps you create socioeconomic mobility. And so instead of focusing on these eight zones, saying that we're going to qualify and assist businesses that are located in the empowerment zone, in QCTs, in a census tract that's located in Ecolonia, you know, those would be more open to providing incentives in some of the outlying, more vulnerable members, more vulnerable communities. And you can still structure incentives to help those businesses based on that, but you really stop creating, we don't have our own set of investment zones at the county and we just rely on some pre-existing predetermined zones that as they're updated, you know, we don't have to come back and update our policy. So if you have a census tract like the 38 area, that because those 12,000 homes, the characteristics of that census tract are going to change over the next 10 years. In 10 years, we may no longer want to be incentivizing businesses in that area because the socioeconomics of that census tract have changed to a point where it's now a very affluent part of the community, then we can get away from making investments there and continue to find, as the courts discussed this morning, what our niche is, right? And it's helping those vulnerable business owners, those vulnerable residents and those vulnerable census tracts and communities. The first category is available for infill and this, Commissioner Leon goes to the topic that you brought up about trying to combat sprawl. There's a number of existing undeveloped lots or lots that might be redeveloped within the urban core. And so it starts to get away because North Gate is suburban sprawl from the 70s, so North Gate's a little bit far out. So we might want to tighten this up to really focus on the urban core, which would be nothing effectively past like Executive Boulevard on the west side, nothing north of, say, you could go Fred Wilson or Hondo Pass in the northeast, and then nothing really east of about Airway Hawkins.
So basically my precinct.
Precinct too. Are those your boundaries?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, Sunderland Park is on the west, but, you know.
Okay, yeah. And so, I mean, the idea here is to promote, instead of having someone build a home or, you know, or a company in the outskirts to try and combat that, let's put them here where there's already existing infrastructure. And so this infill development policy was modeled after the city of El Paso, who has one as well. And they identify these, this urban core and they provide that as long as the investment is $50,000 for residential or $75,000 for commercial, there's no job requirements, there's no wage requirements. And then you can get anywhere from a three to a five-year term and the larger the investment, again, the more benefit you have on the term. So if you made a, and it's capped out, right, after $100,000 of residential investment, that's all. So if you had a residential development that was proposed for, in an urban core that would take the place of a vacant lot and you made that $100,000 investment, you can receive a five-year rebate on that $100,000 minimum investment. And then it goes all the way up to $275,000, but that's only for commercial.
So when it comes to, so is it just like identifying a vacant lot or if you're buying a building, for example, or...
Right, yeah, it could be, it could be buying a building, it could be identifying a vacant lot.
So the idea, is the idea then, just to be, just to be clear, like with infill is to like, is it to create more population density on the residential side? And then on the commercial side, it's just to put back into use a property that may not have been in use or to renovate a property or, like, what are, I guess, what are the...
So it's both a little bit. So the idea is to, instead of having, it's kind of like first in, first out from like a, from an inventory management perspective, these lots are already available, there's already existing infrastructure to serve them, whether that's hard infrastructure in the streets or indirects or services like police, fire, library. And so instead of replicating those services on the fringes in the suburbs, better to do that in the urban core and ensure that this urban core is vibrant. And so the intent is to promote investment within this concentrated urban core.
And the, again, the definition of investment, I guess we need to make that clear, right?
Right.
It's real and personal property, sorry.
Right, real, right.
Real and personal property. So if I, if I, you know, if somebody buys a building and they invest in windows, flooring and paint and it equals $50,000, that would, that would, that would apply? Okay.
If you bought, I mean, conceivably, you could buy a piece of land for $20,000 and then invest $150,000, $170,000 for a single-family home, multi-family home, and that would meet, that would meet the criteria.
Or like adding solar panels or...
Right, I mean, any, any real or personal property that is going to end up on their tax bill.
Speaking of that, Jose and Roberto, have we thought of the, you know, I always feel like we have the, our housing authority over here somewhere. Have you figured what can we ask of them to support, you know, these kinds of the housing and that it doesn't become sprawling, but that we develop an area that has, you know, industries or, I always feel like they're on the fringes as if they're, you know, they should be part of us, you know, part of what we're trying to accomplish. But have you thought of what kind of connectivity we have, we could have with them?
I know that Travis County's Economic Development Department really is focused in on affordable housing, given the lack thereof in Travis County. And there's been different policies that they've identified. So I think we can probably, we're due to continue to evaluate that. This is a good example of a policy type that's intended to increase the stock of affordability, of affordable housing through this investment, but we can sit down and see if there's any connection, any synergy that we can identify with our housing authority.
Make them accountable. This is, we're six years back, you know, same story, you know, we're going to do X, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to, and it sounds really nice and it looks like it's in alignment, but then at the end, I haven't seen any developments that I would say they had to do. I mean, when we have the, you know, home having to step in and being able to accomplish something that, it wasn't that big of a project, you know, that we couldn't have thought that, you know, the county housing authority might have been able to address. So I think we just need to make them more accountable to our mission. We have representatives, each one of us has a representative there, but for some reason, time passes and then I realize that things, you know, we haven't followed up on their commitment to housing in those areas.
I'd like, Jose was saying, there's a, there's a huge program for tax abatements and they work directly county and tax, in the developers, especially if they're hiring women, minorities, and they will be kind of adding into additional layers of incentives and tax breaks. So, yeah, we can explore something with them.
And then just the competition, I had asked one of the developers about going into, you know, more housing, affordable housing, and he tells me, well, the minute that I start going in that direction, like Tropicana, for example, will get tax credits and then it's not, you know, we're not able to get the kind of money. I mean, they can't compete. According to this gentleman, he says that at times they, his whole development just moves out and goes to the, you know, where the tax credits are because they're being subsidized. I mean, it's nice that that happens, but it's also the balance of the competition doing more things for us.
Yes, I believe Travis County is very careful at that. So they have, they call it priority areas, which is in the outskirts. And those are the ones who, that they subsidize, not, you know, like in the center of, you know, of the county. So basically, they do have a breakdown of how to do it and the percentages and the eligibility.
Right, because, I mean, in the centers where it's more, it's so expensive, right? And so, you know, we're kind of backwards because our core is...
More affordable.
More affordable and worse condition, right? And you have developers building new houses, like Commissioner Leon said, they're going to be putting up 12,000 new homes in his, in his district. And so again, we need to make sure that we're incentivizing infill in the core, not incentivizing more of that, those developments out there.
And I know we had mentioned, Commissioner Leon was talking about how we need to get our county housing authority to align a little bit better, that we keep hearing these incredible things that they're going to do, but then it doesn't happen. And we've got home coming in and makes it happen. And I said, it's not that big of a project that they couldn't have handled that. So, you know, when are we going to make them accountable and align them to our, to our strategy?
Before we proceed with these next, because there's about 10 slides about, they're specific to the investment zones, there's a lot of overlap though.
Okay.
But we'd like to see if the court would entertain a health break for us.
Yes.
Would you like to recess for one hour, Judge?
No, no, just a health break, just a health break.
Five minutes? Oh, okay. Commissioner's Court will recess for five minutes. It is 11:07. Five minutes? Oh, okay. Commissioners' Court will recess for five minutes. It is 11:07.
Five minutes is-
Just wait till I get my costume on, let me tell you. So excited.
My mom challenged me. She told me that I would be too chicken to do it. So here I am. I'm going to do it.
So we had our first plunge into the new year event. The whole idea is daring people to jump into cold water. It's pretty much jumping in, washing off the old into the new year.
That was very refreshing. A little frigid, but a great way to start the new year. One year I dressed up as a pickle for Halloween and for Christmas, my kids asked me to dress up as a pickle for Christmas as well. And so now the costume has just kind of been a holiday staple in our family.
A lot of different reactions, actually. We had some that were just kind of like frozen in a sort of shock. And then the other ones that were just super excited and still really cold. This was also an intro again for this new season that's going to be coming on us pretty soon, actually. So with this new season coming up, we're going to be introducing swim lessons and lifeguard classes and different special events throughout the season.
Oh, I love events like this for the public. This is a great idea, a great way for us to kind of engage our children in the community. This was a great way to start the new year. It's a perfect way to plunge into refreshing cold water and reset everything for the new year.
Happy 2024!
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We are coming to you live today from San Elizario, a truly historic gem here in the borderland as you take a look at the historic San Elizario Chapel. Good evening and thank you for joining us. I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. And so today marks our fourth installment of our summer series. And just a reminder for our very loyal viewers is that, okay, so this is the fourth stop that we're making. Last week, we were at Clint, and that was just phenomenal, remember? Ramita's Piccon Farms. And today, we're right in front of the mission, the iconic San Elizario, you know, chapel. And so I learned, Andy, that this town was, I guess, founded in 1877.
You want to know the main thing? When we started saying, we're going to do this small-town spotlight series, the thing that I thought of was San Elizario first and this shot right here.
Me too, me too.
This is exactly what I thought about. This is what we're kind of doing with this small-town spotlight series. And of course, San Elizario, much like some of our other stops that we have made, right on the Rio Grande here. So it kind of forms, of course, the U.S.-Mexico border as we know. And it's more than just a stop on I-10, right? We think about going back and forth on I-10, whether you're going to Dallas or San Antonio. It's more than just a stop that you get gassed. There is a lot to do here and a lot of history.
Oh, absolutely. And part of that history, did you know that San Elizario was first called Presidio de San Elizario? Then obviously it was renamed. And so we have a really cool packet on the history. Check it out.
The original name of the place was San Elziar. San Elziar is a patron saint of soldiers. And they used to use that for the town. But what happened was when non-Spanish speaking people came in, they could not say Elziar. So they could say Elizario. So they changed the spelling to, so that people could pronounce it better that didn't speak Spanish, to E-L-I-Z-A-R-I-O. We have a long history here, that we came from hardworking people, that makes people proud of where they came from and who they are and who they've become. The church has maintained its structure. It stayed the same. The placita, which is under the county, has been maintained. So it's helpful that people realize that this is important. And the tourists like to come here. They like to come here and see the historic building, the portales, the first schoolhouse in the county of El Paso, the jail, the first jail in the county of El Paso is from 1850. Well, we continue to do advertisements to, to have people come in and visit us. The schools also promote the town. Like in the old days, they really didn't, there wasn't too much to study about Hispanic culture. It was more about the East Coast. And I'm thinking, maybe schools need to promote it a little bit more than they probably do. I think slowly, they're giving us, they're giving the town, the history of this town, more publicity. But in the beginning, there wasn't any, I don't think. When people from El Paso come down here and, or from whatever place, but especially from El Paso, they're surprised. They don't know that this place existed. They don't really teach it in the schools. So they don't know that it's there. But a lot of people that do come in say, wow, that's the first time I've been here. And I've been in El Paso all my life. It's like, where have you been? This probably is the third version of the church. The first one was, it was a room in the presidios. And of course, it got destroyed when the flooding that happened before the Elephant Butte was built. And so the second version was probably that little room over there you see with the roof. And immediately it was too small. So then they started building this one like in the 1870s, 1880s. So this is actually the third version. And as you can see, it's on very high ground because it used to flood all the time and destroy. And as you can see, the windows are very high. And the reasons that I've been given that windows were high was because there, there were a lot of Apache Indians, because of course, this was their land. And so they wanted to prevent the Apache Indians from breaking into the building, so they did the windows very high. Inside, you'll see stained glass windows. And the ones that are facing the street has the American flag. And then the one facing the street has the seal of the state of Texas. And it's very unusual for a Catholic church to have flags or symbols of the state. Probably this was because this was right after the Salt War. And in the Salt War, the Texas Rangers were jailed, some people were killed. And they wanted to let the rest of Texas know that we're very Texan. And the rest of the United States know that we're very American. And you'll see San Elizario towards the front by the Sacred Heart of Jesus statue. And then you also see the Virgin de Guadalupe statue on the, on the left-hand side in front of the Virgin Mary. The bells, we can no longer ring the bells unfortunately because that-
Go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened to a special open session. We are on item number four. Discuss the development of El Paso County Economic Development Policies, Procedures, and Processes, including but not limited to discussion on strategic planning, policy development, process improvement within the department, structuring industry-specific development and support programs as funded by various funding sources, including but not limited to the County General Fund, County Economic Impact Fund, County Tax Abatements and Rebates, and Hotel Occupancy Tax Revenues to foster collaboration, identify key priorities, and enhance the overall effectiveness of our economic development efforts.
Ladies and Commissars, thank you for that break. Just to pick up where we left off, we moved on to the incentives that are available only based on these geographic zones. There's predetermined eight geographic zones. They're on the previous slide. The first one that we had was infill development. And just to clarify, I think during the break, we were having some discussions, this is only for a new project in terms of what the investment means. So if you have an existing property owner that wants to make additions to their property, like renovations, that would not meet the criteria. But if you had a vacant home that was purchased or a vacant piece of land that was purchased and then built on and developed, that, all of that real and personal property would, would qualify. And this is using residential as an example. Or if you made significant investment in an underutilized commercial building, that would also qualify for that. So this is not for existing property owners, but more to try and activate land or buildings that are currently not active or that are significantly underutilized. That's the intent of the infill policy here.
Jose, a quick question. Let's say somebody's buying a quarter acre on the west side to build a new home. Would that qualify?
If it fell within the infill boundaries, it would.
Really?
I thought the same thing. I was like, well, I'm going to find a nice lot. Because this, the idea here is to have that home be built in the urban core and not on the fringes, right? Not, not in the suburbs.
Yeah, but if it was on the west side, then it wouldn't because-
But yeah, so-
But even if it's a person's own, it's going to be their own personal home, it would still qualify.
So if there was, if there's, if there was like a tract of land in downtown, like in South El Paso that was available and someone wanted to put a home on that, that would be an infill project and it would be eligible under this.
So the mission trailer is also included? Because it's not listed in the little parentheses, but?
Mission, yeah, the Mission Valley.
Mission Valley.
The Mission Valley is what is, yeah.
And it's from Socorro Road as the eastern and western boundary, Zaragoza Road as the northern boundary, and Gonzalez Road as the southern boundary.
But we can make an exception.
Well, you have other policies that we're going to cover for certain other, other types of investment. But these, these are the ones where we're talking about infill development incentives, specifically for infill.
Another comment on that is, I don't know if, if we should talk about reducing the minimum investment, this 50K, like an unattainable threshold, because we haven't had anybody tap into this, this policy.
And I think a lot of people don't even know we have it.
I bet that's what it is. I would bet that it is that people don't know that it's even a-
Because 50,000 is a lot too. I mean-
Right. I think about-
For a residential?
A residential.
A constructor residential?
To construct a residential, I don't, I don't know that that would-
No, no, I'm not talking, I guess, so it's, so it's, it's construction only or?
Well, it's activation or instruction. So the idea is to take a property that is either not being used or make, like a vacant lot. There's a vacant law over here off of Paisano. That's an example where it's not, it's not being used to provide housing or businesses in this area where people are leaving.
The purchase of the property is also considered, because I thought, I thought it was, okay.
Well, under, the way we treat it under our 381s for corporations, we do qualify that as part of the investment, but it's not available for rebate, right? It's not part of the qualified expenditures that we would allow under the incentives.
So that's what I'm saying.
But the acquisition of land discount.
So, but if you buy a house that's already built, the, the purchase of that house is not going to be included in, in the 50K threshold that you need to meet to be able to get an incentive, right?
And generally, this is not for, this is not for existing homes, right? This is for new construction or?
Jose, we also have blighted, but let me, let's give an example. There's a lot of homes, I'm just going to pick a, a lot of those homes up around Stanton or Kansas are real small brick homes. But maybe if somebody wanted to buy two of those next to each other, knock them down and build a- and build a, if they get the zoning, whatever, and they build a multifamily resident, they, I believe, would be an infill qual, they would qualify. And it does say in the policy...
But not if it was an existing property that they, that they turned into like a rental or something like that.
And possibly. If it's not something that's, the whole idea of an infill is to bring people back in to the core.
Right.
Or to that area. And so if, for some reason, the properties are dilapidated or not, not modernized, then you might be able to consider it. The policy does say, and Jose and I talked about this during the break, it says that refer to our infill guidelines. We don't think we've seen the infill guidelines. So we need to develop those guidelines on what qualifies. But the, we gotta stay true to what the infill is. It's, it's taking properties that are not attractive or not being utilized in these areas and making them that way. I think about out at Mission Trail. Judge, you and I have talked about this. If somebody, what I wish, I wish we could afford to do, but if, I wish private investors would do it, take some of these properties that are dilapidated along the Mission Trail, buy them up, invest in them, give us our little shops and restaurants and things to attract tourism, that would qualify for infill.
What about, like if you're, if you're investing in replacing like plumbing or electrical or something like that, like in a property that's already built, right? Is that, is that...
I mean, generally, the idea of infill is vacant land, but our policy's silent on that right now. But, but the practice is that if you have vacant land, and you're looking to activate that land in an existing, pre-established neighborhood, that, and not just vacant land, right? Where, you know, in an area, in a subdivision where like, you know, all the property is developed, and you have this one random lot that either had a building that was demolished, and it sat fallow for a number of years, perhaps the property was never sold, and you want to redevelop, you want to develop that, that is really the, the starting point. That you're gonna build something new and not necessarily renovate an existing structure, because as we get into renovations, we can get into blighted properties, which is a different incentive. Yeah, so really, we're looking at vacant land.
I mean, it seems like really the test is use, right? Making a piece of property that isn't being currently used usable.
Because there's not a lot of vacant land, first of all...
Right.
But maybe not necessarily...
To purchase and develop in the central part of the county, right?
But maybe it doesn't have to be vacant. So maybe there's a structure on there, but it's not in any use at all, and the person's willing to come in, buy it, redo it completely, so that it does get into use.
And we could, we could either say that it's been vacant, if there's, there's no structure, or if there is a structure, and we can set a timeline that that...
Been out of use.
It's been out of use for a certain number of years. So we can look into that. And then see, and we come, as we, as we start structuring all this feedback into a policy, we can say, these are your options for infill, this is the best practice for infill, and then present those options to the court as well. Moving into the next one, the historic and blighted property rehabilitation for, this is specific for downtown. And so here you can see, the intent is to take underutilized buildings, which, and properties in the downtown area, and ensure that if a company is willing to make an investment of at least 250,000, that they would qualify for incentives. And so this, you know, over the years, we've seen different property owners express interest in structuring different types of projects downtown. As you mentioned earlier, Judge, there's been some proposals that the court has not been interested in because of the type of use. There's been others that are on the horizon. We have a meeting this week with a company who's looking at some properties downtown that want to discuss that with us. This is probably the incentive category they'd be eligible for, based on their investment. But the idea here is to take underutilized, blighted properties that are historic in nature, and ensure that they are preserved. And if you have an existing property owner that maybe wants to renovate their existing structure, to make the investments like what Commissioner Stout, what you were mentioning, upgrades to windows, plumbing, all of that, that type of investment, as long as it increases the use and vitality of the building, and preserves its, and promotes its architectural significance, it would be eligible under this specific category.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in that case, is the, is the minimum investment too high? Because you're not gonna spend, most houses in Central aren't even worth 250,000, you know? Or, you know, there's a lot of properties, you know, in down, and I don't know if this is just like...
This one is just specifically for downtown.
What's the definition of downtown? Is it, is it like, as per the Downtown Management District, or...
No, we define it.
Let me pull it up here.
And it might, and it might be good to expand to other neighborhoods, like, some of the neighborhoods like Sunset Heights if it's not included, or the Rio Grande neighborhood if it's not included.
It's a pretty big definition. It's all the way to Chelsea Street.
As the eastern boundary.
Okay.
Chihuahua, that Union Plaza is the western, I-10 is the northern, and Paisano as the southern.
Yeah, so, so I mean, there's, there's some neighborhoods north of I-10 that could also possibly benefit from, like Sunset Heights, for example, like...
And I think that's the question for the court.
The UTEP area, where, you know, where El Paso High School is, you know, the...
And I do believe, if I recall, part of the issue was what was and was not in a historic district. Because I think it was trying to incentivize those that weren't in a historic district that would not be eligible for tax credits, but I may be wrong on that.
Well, I mean, I think it could be layered. I think, I don't have a problem with it being in a historic district either. And if, and if, and if we wanna talk about being able to make it attainable for those, those types of renovations, then nobody's gonna spend 250K on those types of renovations in one of those properties. Unless, unless it's a big property like a hotel, or like one of those big ones on El Paso Street or something like that.
Some of the Duranguito properties might qualify.
Yeah.
So the, the intent of this section is for both historic and blighted. So we are looking at historic property specifically. So this starts to segue a little and overlaps a little bit with the idea of heritage tourism, people doing architectural tourism to see some of the buildings that we have. So this is not just blighted properties. These are generally properties that are located within a historic, either the property itself is historic, or it's in historic district, or we find it to be historic in some way. The county does have the survey that was done a few years ago, that's still pending a final status from the National Park Service. But that is an informational piece of literature that we have, that we could look at what properties might be available for these types of incentives to apply to. So this one is specific for that. If the court wanted to open it up to blighted properties generally, and, you know, countywide, then you start to lose a little bit of the focus that you had here, which was specific for the downtown area only.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying like countywide, but...
In any historic district?
There's, there's, yeah, there's other historic districts that could, that we could also help, you know, layer this incentive on to, to, to help folks, you know, make the plunge, or take the plunge and utilize...
Okay. Would you like to see a split between commercial and residential to allow someone to make renovations to...
I think it should be both.
Right. So you can have like, so similar to the other one where it says, if you invest this much in residential, this is a threshold for residential versus a threshold for, for commercial. Because, I mean, if it's in a historic district, recognized by the city, and in a historic overlay, I mean, everything's down to your paint colors that you can use, and the window treatments that you can authorize, like those are all things.
Yeah, very restrictive, yeah.
Right? And so that's the reason why the cost can be a little bit higher, which might be the reason, which might prevent someone from even doing something to renovate their building. Okay.
So to that end, why exclude some historic parts that are, or buildings or whatever that might be outside El Paso?
No. So we would say for any, any historic property.
It says downtown.
No, the way the policy's written now, we're asking for feedback. Like, let's, let it be, and that would allow us to make historic investments in a property that, like in Fabens, there was a Tros building that is now God awful O'Reilly's.
Autozone, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
And...
People are still very upset about that.
Right. It was, it was a beautiful two-story building, and that property is historic, it's not in a municipality, but we know it to be historic by virtue of the architect that designed it. And so the county could have incentivized its renovation with its previous property owners. So we would open it up to any historic property. Being in, in a historic district in a municipality makes it easier to make that determination. It puts it on staff to determine if a property is historic or just old, but not historic yet.
But historic or blighted, not historic and blighted.
Right. The way the policy's written right now is both, historic and blighted.
And blighted.
And blighted. And we do define blighted. So a building that doesn't, that has two stories, that only utilizes its first story, and the second-story floors are boarded up, that's a blighted property, because it's underutilized. A home that's just doing window treatment, and they're gonna put in 30,000, but it's otherwise a habitable space, would not qualify. But if it's been run down, if it's been tagged, and there's, you know, particle board covering the windows, and it's blighted, and it's an eyesore, we would wanna incentivize that to be renovated.
The intent on this policy, though, was for either.
Yes, either not.
It's either. It's not, you have to be historical and blighted. The intent when we wrote this policy originally was for either.
Right.
We specifically had a conversation about blighted properties or historic properties. I see how it says, yeah.
We'll need to clean that up then. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's historic.
Or blighted.
And/or blighted.
Right.
Commissioner, not that we can control, but where's the, McDonald's gonna be in San Eli?
I think it's actually a vacant lot.
It is?
So I think it's a vacant lot. I don't think we have, it's not gonna be the same situation where a historic building. So I think it's, what I understand is that it's across the street from the church's ticket. Not vacant lot right there.
So I'm trying to think of, so it doesn't disrupt a historical kind of...
No, it's, so it's past the historic district. It's further down. It's off of Chicken Ranch Road, which is now outside of the historic part of San Eli.
Richard told me, go what?
Yeah, no, it's not in the middle of the historic district.
They're interested in...
The autozone that is in San Eli, though, does have the architecture of a Mission, so 7-Eleven on Dindinger also. I think it's Circle K now, actually. So, I mean, there's, those rules were put into place by the county to not dissuade that private investment, but if there was gonna be investment, that it followed some architectural standard.
And they know that ahead of time?
I don't know. How, how far does that extend? I don't, I don't know if they know that.
The, the zoning goes all the way to the, pretty much to the San Eli Sadio City limits. So off of, like off of Chicken Ranch Road and Socorro, I don't think that the, the architectural standards apply anymore.
Can we get a map of that? Of what those boundaries are?
Yeah, we'll reach out to Public Works. The, the next section is, and this gets a little confusing, as we were putting these slides together. So there's two types of projects that can be eligible for incentives at, related to the airport. The first one is a corporate relocation to the Fabens Airport. So if a company makes a significant investment at the airport of at least a million dollars, and they pay meeting county wage to a certain percentage of their workforce, again, that phrase is used, but it's unclear what the percentage is, and there's no minimum jobs required, that they would be eligible for these structures. So if you make a million-dollar investment, you have a five-year, 75% rebate. And if you make a $3 million investment, you have a 10-year, 90% rebate structure. And this is for corporate relocation to the Fabens Airport. So this is a company setting up shop and operations there. So Blue Origin, SpaceX, you know, you name it, saying, we're gonna have a sign and a building at the Fabens Airport. And it can be within a mile radius of the airport, doesn't have to be like on the airport proper. So it could be set up somewhere in Fabens. This would be eligible for, they'd be eligible for these incentives. Now, the next slide, is not that one, is for companies to set up industrial development. So this is not full operations, but maybe a footprint, so long as they're involved in a STEM-related industry. They have to make an investment of $250,000 to set up that shop. And so this could be a company that is potentially maybe leasing space from the county. And this is where some of that overlap with what Dr. Chattery said earlier this week, was it last week? Was it recently?
Thursday.
And this is the idea that, you know, maybe you have half a million dollars' worth of equipment, that you're gonna put in a county rented hangar, a county-owned hangar, or a hangar that is potentially leased by the, to the university, and they attract the company. We can provide incentives based on the investment they're making. And that can be either, from anywhere from $250,000 up to a million, the million being the max. You can see the 10-year, 90% rebate being kind of the threshold, the maximum that we continue to see in these smaller incentive packages. But again, the idea is not to, to have a smaller operational investment, and this is really, the niche here is potentially the businesses that locate in existing spaces that support everything that's happening at the airport. So one category is, company X is saying, we're here, we're in Fabens, this is our spot, this is our office, and it's a bigger investment, because you can see that the minimum is a million dollars. This is a smaller, like, we're, we have an operation there, but we're not fully in. But the idea would be to get them here, and then they see how great it is, and then they make the plunge to, to set up a larger operation.
And they don't have to be an airport property. It can be a block away.
They can be, yeah, they can be within the mile radius of the airport.
And just, this is not exactly this, but I spoke to Betsy about this, that maybe, Judge and Commissioner, we can consider creating a, an advisory board, because I see this airport is just growing and growing over the next several years, that with, and we, we fill it with people that know aviation to advise us as we move forward. Just a, something that you can have in the back of your mind perpetuating.
And just, other things that could go out at the, in addition to this policy, right now, some of our other policies will overlap. So for example, we have our targeted industry policy. Well, one of our targeted industries is aerospace. So if an aerospace company invested more than a million dollars and was going out there, we have other policies to help cover that as well. Other part of our policy.
The third one is for a non-STEM-related business that is in support of the Fabens Airport, setting up within a one-mile radius of the airport. One of the things that we've heard consistently from the Aerospace Center has been, the airport is in a place where it's, 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 you can present, it's presentable, right? Like, there's activity, the hangar's been modernized, there's more investment being made in the facility itself. But now comes the next step of, okay, so if you have companies who are going to locate here, where is the hotel for them to stay at? Where is the restaurants and the support industries that need to be located there? So this small business relocation at the airport is really that support. We have a structure in place to help businesses that wanna make that jump to serve the airport in place as well. So it's very encompassing in terms of not just being focused on attracting the big fish at the airport, but it's the, the big fish who maybe wanna have a small seat at the table for now, and it's the, the industries that are gonna support those operations in whole. And so this is available for, for that as well, and it's a similar structure of 250,000. This one, if you're thinking about hospitality being eligible, and, you know, trying to figure out a way to incentivize restaurants and hotels and stuff from going out there, I know that generally, we've moved away from, from hotels and lodging, but the Fabens area might be an area, because of the airport, eventually, that there might be a need or demand to consider lodging. But that's, so that's one thing to consider, in addition to the, the investment being set at 250,000. It might be high for a smaller business who has an interest in setting up shop that can provide some sort of support service. So there may be some value in, in stating that that's the goal investment, as opposed to the minimum investment, but that everything would be treated on a case-by-case basis for this type of small business relocation. This, yes, so these next two slides mirror the airport in terms of structure and everything else, but the location changes from the Fabens Airport to the Horizon, the Horizon Investment Corridor. This was developed because the, the county was really engaged, and continues to be engaged with our partners in Horizon City at the Economic Development Corporation. And they've set up their investment corridor along Darrington Road, which includes a number of development that they've seen in terms of warehousing and some small logistics park investments. And so the idea is just to have the incentives overlap to serve Horizon City and their, and their EDC's objectives as well. And so you can see here, it's corporate relocation... And so you can see here, it's corporate relocation as well as the STEM industry. Everything is the same. It's just really the location that changes here. What is different about Horizon is the inclusion of healthcare services. And so we don't have anything like that for another part of the community. It's just in the Horizon Investment Corridor. That we would ensure that if there was a healthcare provider that was making an investment of at least $250,000 and providing health insurance coverage of at least 50% of the premium back to the employee, that they would be eligible for rebates in the Horizon area. This speaks a little bit to the point that Ms. Keller raised earlier about healthcare shortage being such a reality that this community faces. Whether there's an interest in seeing the healthcare service category really kind of opened up countywide, that so long as we have healthcare investment being made, that we consider providing an incentive to those companies. There's no wage requirements right now. It's that unclear wage language that we continue to see throughout the policy. So that's for the court to have a discussion on. I know that we'd said earlier that we would take some things case-by-case. This one might be another example of an industry that the court considers on a case-by-case basis, just given the shortage of healthcare service providers that we have in the region.
Jose, real quick. When it comes to the, you know, these policies that are, that were concentrating in Horizon, what was the genesis of that? Was it, did they come and ask us for this or? So I'm just trying to understand. You know, one thing that we also need to think of, I don't know, I mean, is a county building roads in Horizon City? No, we don't build any roads, none of the extensions out there or?
No, what, well, what we've done, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what we've done is we have, they asked us to participate in a tax reinvestment zone with them. And part of what I know that they're wanting to do with that tax reinvestment zone is invest in roadways and infrastructure. But the, this was one of their original requests when they, when we first started working on economic development. And at the time, their economic development director came to us and asked on behalf of the city or the town of Horizon City if we would entertain including this in our policy. And the court approved doing it.
Does, is SISD, does that cover Horizon?
It's split.
No, that's the Clint Independent School District.
Horizon High School is Clint. Eastlake High School is Socorro.
But Eastlake isn't in Horizon. It's Horizon and J. So.
All right, 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 right. Excuse me, yes.
Right, so I mean, I just want to, I mean, point out that the more that we, you know, incentivize development in that part of the county, it's important to remember that, you know, maybe we won't be building the roads that are in Horizon, but we're building the roads that lead to those roads that are being built in Horizon. And you have a lot of school districts that are doing a lot of bonding, right? I don't know if Clint has any plans anytime soon, but I know SISD does, I know CISD does in the very near future. And all of that, you know, impacts our bond rating. It impacts our ability to get bonds passed. Just, I mean, just throwing that out there, right? I mean, it's, it's part of the whole, I guess, conversation about, you know, whether or not we're incentivizing development, more development in the outskirts, right? Some people don't call it sprawl, some people do, but if, you know, if we're, you know, developing more or incentivizing more development, then we have to, I mean, we have to understand that we could be putting ourselves in a position to, you know, have, I mean, a precarious financial situation in the future, right?
There's only a few more slides in terms of these geographically specific zones. One is Mission Trail Business Development. This is for a company that locates or expands within the Mission Trail. This is qualified, available for properties within the historic district that make a minimum investment of 30,000. There's no minimum jobs requirement, no wage requirement. And you can see here that if the investment doubles to 60,000, you have a 10-year term 90% rebate. So the minimum investment is lower here than in other parts. And so that 30, 25, $30,000 figure that this particular policy is using might be the threshold to really provide for small businesses moving forward. Because $25,000 might be a more reasonable investment for businesses to consider making.
And I think this is good because it's already, that area is already developed. We just need to, you know, we're not, we're not like incentivizing sprawl with this, with this type of policy.
Yeah, I think as the court has that discussion, and you think, I know there was some comments made earlier about the median county wage, like moving forward, this is, this is it. So if the court wants to discuss that, you know, it might be important to kind of draw the line in the sand about where the boundaries will be for, for anything moving forward.
No wage requirement apply here.
No, no, I was saying to Commissioner Stoudt's point about incentivizing businesses in the suburbs and in the sprawl. If there's a, if there's an interest of the court to set a boundary and say, well, we're not going to do this beyond this line moving forward. Right? I think the court, I think Commissioner Stoudt brought that up, and if that's a conversation the court wants to have, that's helpful for us to know.
So I think it would be maybe like a map? Because there are some areas, like this area, where we're willing to invest.
Right.
And mapping where we're not.
I feel like the Mission Trail is, it's more of like a legacy, you know, like neighborhood because it's been around for such a long time. It's not, it's not the new development that's happening in Eastlake. It's not the new development that's happening in Horizon or in the unincorporated parts of the county that, you know. So it's different.
But I thought that we had already had a discussion about maybe some of the wage requirements, looking at those on a case-by-case basis for the smaller businesses already.
Yeah.
Right? So not making it an absolute requirement when we're talking about the incentives for small businesses, right? So it seems like that would fit within this.
No, I think my comment was more about if.
The boundaries, the boundaries for the policies to.
To Commissioner Stoudt's closing comments on the previous slide and then the ones that he made right now. When you look at the pattern of development, the issue is that if, going to the point that we made earlier about colonias and these QCTs and everything else, those are located in areas where there is development that's happening. And so I think another important component might be that if there's a business that maybe is not located in a colonia but that potentially serves the colonia, that, you know, then the court could consider. Right? Because if you have something that's, like, let's look at Montana Vista, for example. You could have something pop up on the corner of Saragossa and Montana. It's a stone's throw from Montana Vista, but it's not in that census tract or those census-designated places. But if it's an industry that's missing and it's not in the colonia proper, but it serves residents in Montana Vista, that's the goal here, right? I think it's trying to help businesses for those residents. So that might be another consideration to think about.
I think that's fair.
The challenge is, though, that that is in the middle of what we would probably consider to be, from a planning perspective, sprawl. Right? So I think that's the balance that Commissioner, that you're referencing. How do you balance creating industry in sprawl to try and serve the needs of existing residences in other parts of the community? And the same holds true for the Upper Valley and the Northwest part of the county in Precinct Four. We see that in other parts because you had these periphery, you had these colonias pop up on the periphery and then everything in between is now being developed. And in some cases, you have colonias backing up to new subdivisions. So it's a bit of a challenge to figure out what the lane is. And so that might be why we treat a lot of these on a case-by-case basis, based on their location.
Sorry for making you go back.
Here you can see a specific policy for lodging. I mentioned this earlier about the Favens Airport potentially needing a similar niche policy for hoteling. And this is because of the idea of, you know, creating beds and breakfasts and Airbnb inns and everything else like that. That's something your policy doesn't speak of because when it was drafted, Airbnb was just on the cusp of taking off. If that's, if that would be, if there was a property owner who wanted to make an investment, not in a traditional bed and breakfast with a hotel lodging license, but rather invest in a series of properties that would be short-term rentals through Airbnb, that still creates demand that serves heritage tourism. So that's probably an update that we would need to include here. We would just need to ensure that there's a way to guarantee that the property is being used for that and is not solely being used as a residence and then just being rented out on Airbnb on occasion. Quite the opposite. I think you could allow the person to live there, but if a majority of its time is going to be spent as an Airbnb short-term rental, we would ensure the policy reflects that. If they make an investment of 250,000, it's a five-year 75% rebate, double that, goes up to 10-year 90%. What's unique about this particular provision is that this also is eligible for sales tax rebate. None of the other policies that we presented so far allow for sales tax rebate with the exception of hotels. Of this, hotels specifically in the Mission Trail Corridor. And so if they projected sales are at least 50,000, they'd receive a 75% rebate on their sales tax and 90% rebate on sales tax revenue that's, or sales that exceed 90, that exceed, excuse me, 100,000.
Why is sales are not hot?
I don't, I don't, I don't recall.
Do you remember, Betsy? I mean, because it seems.
Well, the, the rebate could be of hot taxes.
Policy just says sales tax.
Well, and then also, again, like the minimum investment of 250K, I mean, that's,
Oh.
That's for like, like a big hotel or something like that. But if you have an individual who's going to buy a property and renovate it for an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast, again, they're not going to spend 250K.
That's a good point.
So what we're hearing is you'd like to see lower minimum investment requirements. But on the, the reason why sales tax versus hot tax, hot tax for the county is half a percent, correct?
Right, it's half a penny.
Or 2.5.
Half a penny. Oh, no, hot tax is 2.5%, yes.
Right, but sales tax for the county.
Is half a penny.
Is half a penny. So maybe we were looking to rebate the lower and not hurt, at the time, I bet it was because we also did not have hardly any hot tax or any hot tax reserve back then. And so I think we were very leery of doing anything to jeopardize our hot tax.
And I'm not saying that we need to do that. I just was asking, I mean, because it seemed to me like when it comes to sales, I guess, there's a sales tax that's assessed on the, when you rent a hotel as well? So there's hot tax and there's sales tax? Okay.
Yeah, no, I'd rather, I would rather preserve the hot tax.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean.
You're interested in seeing this incentive opened up for the Favens Airport area as well? I don't know when, I don't know, I don't know that we're honestly within five, I don't know that in the next 10 years you'll see an airport service operation that requires a hotel. I think that's the long-term vision that the Aerospace Center shared with us.
I do think, Jose, I think that's a valid, because I know even like Blue Origin, people come in for Blue Origin and they stay in hotels here. So if we had a business interested and willing to develop a hotel out there, it would be a great.
I mean, but, but do we need to look at whether this incentive would be better or just the regular 381, like we've done with hotels in the past?
So these would all be 381s?
But, right, right.
But like you're saying a property tax versus.
But I'm just talking about like the.
Oh, I see.
You know, because, I mean, we've incentivized building hotels downtown in the past because they, right, like we did with.
And they'd already qualify under another area possibly.
Right, right.
If it was a building.
I think the idea with the Mission Trail was that it was so specific and there hadn't been a lot done. And in terms of rental properties or hoteling and lodging along the Mission Trail, and it was such an important corridor for the court that it was called out specifically, which is why the sales tax was also added, because at the same time this policy's developed, the court is having conversations about not rebating sales tax any further. But it was included here for the, with the idea of creating a really, really generous incentive package because of the need that exists along the Mission Trail to be successful. I think the same would then hold true for Favens. So we can, we'll update that to include Favens as well. And then lower the minimum investment and then add the updates with Airbnb and create some, some language that speaks to that. The next one is for startup incentives, so long as it's located in any of the eight investment zones.
Possibly nine.
Possibly nine, right. And located in or serving a colonia or, you know, or within the empowerment zone. I think those are some of the pre-established zones that would create, that would expand eligibility for businesses based across the county. And we can give you an analysis of what that looks like. But the benefit there is that instead of having these county-identified and described zones, we're going to use other pre-established zones that we know and we can point to. And so when you think about the colonias and really serving the residents that are there and the vulnerability that they face, this speaks to, this speaks to that. So that, but we can have that conversation as well before we wrap up today. But whatever the investment zones are, right now, there's eight. If we expand that to what I was mentioning right now, that's, that could grow. And so the minimum investment would be 25,000. And again, that reflects that lower dollar amount. This is intended to be a startup and there's no, so there's no minimum jobs requirement, no wage requirements. And you can see there that as the investment grows, so does the rebate. And so if we're lowering the investment for other businesses that maybe are a little bit more developed, there may be some need to shift the startup incentive amount down as well to 10 to 15,000. But we can also do some research on what, you know, the capital needs are for startup, you know. Because if it's 25,000 on average, and that's probably a good number, but if it's more like 10, 15 to really just kind of start operations, we may consider lowering that number as well. So we'll do a little bit of more research on what that threshold should be. So that brings us to this SWOT analysis that we completed, just looking at some big, high-level takeaways. We've discussed a lot of these throughout the day today. In terms of strengths, the policy really obviously encourages private investment, really focuses on corporate-level businesses and has, and your policies also have a structure for mega projects now in terms of your 312 policy. I think there's some language that needs to be included into 381 to marry those two together. But overall, it's a policy that, when we looked at the literature review of other counties, it's aligned with those practices of trying to attract and recruit businesses. Moving now into some weaknesses, there's an inequitable focus on large projects. Part of that might be the awareness that we discussed today, whether or not businesses and property owners know about what that looks like. And also, there's an absence of some county values that we've heard in recent years in terms of your salaries, industry type. There's no methodology in our policy to set the MAV, the Minimum Appraised Value. This is more of a technical, operational aspect, but if we can really gain some, a foundation to include in the policy on setting your MAV that helps us set up all the 381 agreements that we'll execute over the next several years to really preserve the county's investment in these small businesses. And as we've discussed throughout the day, small businesses continually lack access to capital for investment. And there's no mechanism within your existing policy to give companies capital on the front end. It's all very much based on investment and rebate, but it presumes the ability and the capacity to make that investment on their own. The opportunities that are out there are for a more detailed application form. That's an opportunity because the more we understand about these businesses. That's an opportunity, because the more we understand about these businesses, the more tailored the incentive package can be. That's also in alignment with the discussion the court had today about incentivizing companies that provide better benefits, are of a specific industry type, view things through a green lens. Those are all opportunities that we can ask for in the application form, can develop and expand the existing small and medium-based incentives, marry all the existing policies into the county economic development incentive repository, and really ensure that we coordinate regionally on establishing MAV procedures with agencies like Horizon, like Vinton, City of El Paso, obviously, Borderplex, and any other agency that we have partnered on and Socorro that will partner on with economic development. The biggest threats to the success of this policy right now, an uneven distribution across industry type and size. We spoke to that in our opening comments. Most of this is going to be for the Eaton's, Schneider's, Meta, and we're not seeing enough of local mom and pop, the yard, Three Missions Brewery, that cool bar on Talbot, excuse me, bar and grill on Talbot in Canatío that I just went to a few, during the holiday, Roberto and I went, because Jessica from the city was leaving. Elizabeth, Jessica left years ago, sorry. But those types of businesses are investments that are being made in underserved areas, right? And that reduces, that combats a lot of the effects of sprawl when you think about having a third place in an established neighborhood. A restaurant, a pub, a library, any other community center, that third place enhances quality of life significantly. And if you don't have to travel, you can even walk there, or your commute is a two-minute car ride versus, let's get on I-10, let's get on 375, and let's get on Socorro Road and drive in somewhere, that really not only adds to our infrastructure wear and tear, but I think our overall mental health as well. So those third places are important, and right now, your policy is structured really to not provide a lot of incentives that are competitive for those smaller businesses. And one thing that we want to make sure that the policy speaks to, and this is more of a programmatic, value-based discussion we want to continue to have with the court, is what the short-term, what the long-term effects and the long-term strategy here is. So we like the announcements with the jobs and the capital investments, but what are some other sustainable policies that the county is going to have to continue to ensure success of businesses? Judge, you mentioned something earlier about coaching and following up with businesses, making sure that they're successful upon their investment. That is very much in line with this idea of ensuring that we're monitoring these things on the long term, and that we're not just kind of focused on the big shiny fish and then moving on to the next big shiny, exciting project, right? They were making sustained investment in terms of resources, financial as well as staffing and otherwise. Undesirable industry eligibility, this is something the court, if you'll recall, a few months ago, we brought, we brought a manufacturer of a product, and we wanted to ensure that this was something the court was interested in. If there's any industry types that the court would never entertain the production of that happening here in El Paso, it's important for us to hear that feedback, and it's not something we need to hear now, if you want to take some time to think about that. If it's a company with a history of pollution, or if it's a company with a product that you don't feel is in line with the values of our community, those types of industries we can make sure to include as, or exclude as being eligible. Your abatement policy speaks a little bit as an example of any company that would have a negative, that would negatively impact the military installation's mission here in El Paso. And so if you had something that somehow was not conducive with the, with Fort Bliss and their operations, and I don't have an example unfortunately, but those are some of the other types of examples that you should consider and think about. And then as you gain some insight, and if you have anything, you can share that with us, and we can incorporate that into the revision. And obviously, public composition, right? There's always, we're always trying to do our best to let companies know, this is a sizable investment of public funding in your company, what is the company, how is the company going to ensure that this is a sound investment for the residents and it's a defendable decision that the commissary's court is going to make? But that always will remain a threat when you're discussing managing limited resources and making investments in some of these companies. I mentioned a little bit earlier that there's always a rate of failure that you have to be willing to accept, and I think that's just when you start getting into business development, whether it's public, in our case, or even private sector, investors have to be willing to accept some level of risk of failure for their businesses and their investments. It's just about trying to have controls in place to mitigate a lot of that. So it's with this tools, it's with this analysis and with the feedback that you've given us, that we're going to go back now and start drafting this, and then we'll continue these conversations. I'm going to turn it over to Roberto to see if he has any closing comments that he'd also like that.
Just very briefly, on the, you know, industries that you would be ineligible or undesired, you know, you have, you have a great example over there in the backup from the City of San Antonio, page seven, and then the City of Dallas, page two on the second paragraph. So just want to point you out, because those are great examples of things to consider. Number two, I think, you know, the, that, the other thing that I want to propose for the court on the draft that we're going to be preparing is, we spoke about how the quality jobs is one of the pillars that we have where, that we don't use that often. So I would like to add as a draft for your consideration later on, a table that is meant to be for quality jobs based on performance, how much they pay, and of course, following, you know, the structure of the rebates without overpassing the existing structure, so we don't basically have an impact on, a financial impact on what we already have. So with that, those be my closing comments, and thank you so much for all your feedback.
That completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Okay, so we're adjourned. Great meeting, Jose, Roveth, and everybody else.
This is... Includes today's meeting at 12:17 PM.
Jose, I like your comment.